All right, the video is ready, so I will call to order the February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the planning board for the city of Auburn. On our agenda item, um, agenda item number one, we have roll call. I will begin on my far left.
Riley Bergeron.
Darren Finnegan.
David Trask.
Paul Jacques.
Evan Seer.
Tim DeRoche.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Tony Ferraro.
Amanda Garrett.
I realize that didn't count ahead of time. I was just making sure we had the full membership, so we didn't have to elevate, um, our associate members tonight. Uh, item number two on our agenda is minutes, approval of the January tenth, two thousand, uh, January tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes. Are there any amendments to the amendments? Seeing none, I'll accept a, I'll seek a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? The minutes are accepted. Um, because we do not accept our agenda through motion, I will, uh, exercise my authority as chair, uh, to bring the following to the attention of the planning board. Um, we do have an item number seven, which is a workshop regarding resolve zero six dash zero nine zero six two two, uh, two zero two-two and order one five one dash one one zero seven two zero two-two, uh, regarding amendments to the zoning when the, within the agricultural resource protection zone. Uh, looking at our agenda, it is my opinion that we may not have time to give full attention to that workshop. Um, I know that that workshop is at the end and that there may be members of the public who are here specifically for that workshop, so I believe we need to discuss that now, if that is something that we want to continue to keep in the agenda for tonight, or to move to a future, um, special meeting of the planning board. So, um, I would suggest a date of February tw- twenty-eighth for that special meeting, that would be two weeks from now. Um, however, uh, know that I'm currently the sitting chair. We will have elections for chair at the end of the meeting and that date, uh, is subject to change, but that is the date that I would suggest. Um, putting it to members of the planning board, whether or not they wish to, um, table that workshop now, um, or wait until the end of the meeting to see if we get to it. So, discussion on that, is there any, any opinions on that?
I am very into moving it to the twenty-eighth.
I also agree, it's a, a lot, uh, to go over and to try to fit it in at the end of the meeting would probably not do the service it needs, so I think its own meeting would be a good idea.
I agree.
Is there anyone in opposition to this? All right, seeing none, um, I would need a motion to amend the agenda to table item number seven to a date certain February twenty-eighth for a workshop of the planning board.
Uh, I'd make a motion to amend the agenda so that item seven is tabled until a date certain of February twenty-eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Item seven, planning board workshop and resolve zero six zero nine zero six two thousand twenty-two and order one five one dash one one zero seven two zero two-two has been tabled to a date certain February twenty-eighth.
Will that be six P M?
That's an excellent question. Um, convention for our meetings are generally six P M. I would, because we did not set a different time, uh, my assumption is that that would be the regular time, yes. Um, having said that, I know staff has raised some concerns about, uh, other items. Are there anything that staff wants to, to bring up now before we move forward?
Um, yeah, so, agenda item, agenda item five, um, the applicant for the, um, subdivision, for the public hearing subdivision review, um, they are asking to table that, um, they're asking to table the subdivision review because they are in conversation with their abutting neighbor, um, to maybe purchase part of that, part of that lot, in which case, if that were to go through, then subdivision wouldn't apply. So, um, that will be tabled indefinitely, if that's okay.
Um, I will take that item out of order. We're looking at item number five, a public hearing subdivision review for parcel ID number two five zero zero two eight to create three residential building lots, uh, on Oakland Street. Um, I will throw this out to the board right now, uh, with regard to discussion. Um, does the board wish to leave this within the current agenda, or do they wish to table this to a date uncertain? So, um, opinions?
Uh, well, assuming that they're withdrawing it, I would think that we should probably table it to a date uncertain.
Um, are they choosing to withdraw or simply ask for it to be tabled?
That's, um...
Okay, I can rescind the word withdraw and we can use table.
So, the applicant is asking for it to be, let me ask a follow-up question.
Yes.
Um, sometimes when there are zoning changes, these zoning changes are accomplished through a, um, an individual petitioning for their personal parcel and they're petitioning as an individual.
Yep.
Um, sometimes it, it, it occurs as a citizen's petition, uh, initiative. Is this a citizen's petition on which there are other members, or is the applicant the sole person seeking the?
Yep, that's a great question. The applicant is the only person seeking the, the change, so there's not, um, there's not a public petition for this, for this item. So, they were the one proposing it and they're the one, um, requesting that it be tabled.
Okay, having hear that, um, I will throw in my two cents as the chair. I think again, this is item number five, I'm sure there are people here who wish to speak on this. However, if we think that we are going to get there and table it, uh, once we get to item number five, I think it's in the best interest, um, to serve people's time who are here and to respect their time, we think we're going to table it then, uh, it's in our best interest to table it now, so that folks are not sticking around, um, thinking that they might speak to a public hearing, um, discussion. Is there any opposition to that? Seeing none, I'd seek a, a motion to table item number five to a date uncertain.
I'd make a motion to table item five in the agenda to a date uncertain.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Item number has, five has been tabled to a date uncertain, so that members of the public understand, uh, tabling at a date uncertain, that means that that item cannot be taken off the table unless a motion is made by a member of the planning board to do so. Um, whereas the previous item was tabled to a date certain, that means that, um, it will be tabled until the twenty-eighth, um, and will be taken up on the twenty-eighth, so in case there's any confusion as to what the date certain and uncertain means. Thank you very much. We will move on to item number three, public hearing site plan review. The American Development Group, LLC, A D G, is proposing phase two of the Stable Ridge Apartments project at parcel ID two two nine dash zero zero seven five 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 Court Street. This proposal includes five twelve-unit apartment buildings with total of sixty units and four garage structures. This proposal is pursuant to chapter sixty, article sixteen, division two, site plan review, division three, set, special exception, division four, subdivision, article four, division fourteen, form-based code, and main revised statutes thirty dash A four four two, subsection six. Uh, we will conduct this as we conduct all of our hearings. Our hearings progress as follows. The planning board will hear from the staff, the staff will pre- will present their report. And the planning board will have an option to ask questions of staff. After that, we will ask the applicant or the agent for the applicant to come forward and speak to the project. At that time, the applicant or agent for the applicant will have the opportunity to answer any questions that were raised during the staff report, or add any additional information they believe is pertinent. Members of the planning board will then have the option to question the applicant or agent of the applicant. When that portion of the public hearing is completed, we will open the public input section of the hearing. At that point, we will invite members of the public to speak on this specific item. I will, uh, let members of the public know what the rules are for public participation at that point. After the public input section of the hearing, uh, has closed, the planning board will enter into final deliberations and decision. So, having explained the public hearing process, staff, are you ready to present your report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is essentially phase two of American Development Group's, um, sixty-unit multifamily project on five fifty-five Court Street. Phase one, um, just to kind of give you guys a little bit of brief, uh, brief background, there, there were five units there, um, five buildings, uh, for a total of sixty, uh, units on the phase one. Um, this parcel, this, uh, is now the same parcel, but it's an extension to, uh, become phase two. Um, the parcel is in form-based code, uh, T dash four point two B zoning district and is shown on the G I S systems as parcel ID two twenty-nine zero zero seven with an address of five fifty-five Court Street. The property is currently owned by American Development Group, A D G, and by survey, currently contains about thirteen point two five acres on a single lot. The existing lot has about four hundred feet of frontage on Court Street, and the parcel is shown on the survey, prepared by Survey Works with review and presented by Stony Brook Consultants. Since there is only one parcel on phase one, phase two, a subdivision approval will not be required. The project, um, we took a look at, at specifically, and I'll get into detail on the project, but we took a real close look at utilities, uh, on the site, um, safety, um, particularly with fire. Um, we took a, a real good look at traffic, and we'll talk a little bit about traffic today. And the traffic, and I just want to, uh, touch on, a little bit on the traffic, we looked at that, um, as a whole project, so we looked at phase one and phase two. Um, same thing with the water in terms of, um, the capacity for water, we looked at phase one and phase two and what those capacities are, and the elevations that are existing there. Um, the water district was very specific in their requirements for, you know, what they were required. Um, we're making those, uh, essentially a condition of approval. Um, in addition to that, the, the traffic, there's going to be, because of the seventy, seventy trips at the peak hour, so, um, a traffic movement permit is required once you hit the threshold of one hundred trips. We're not quite there yet, but we still, um, we're still, we still have city ordinances that we have to abide by that, um, addresses the impacts of that, that traffic that is occurring on Court Street, so we've got some improvements that we'll, we'll talk about today as well. Um, the proposed improvements are shown on the attached full plan set prepared by Stony Brook Consultants. Building design and construction will be completed by D A R G O. Uh, architectural engineering for American Development Group. Um, this is a main, uh, limited liability company located in Naples, Maine. The project is led by local resident, uh, Jessica Klemic. The project will include five sixteen thousand square foot, three-story buildings with ninety parking spaces that exceed the parking requirements of seventy-five spaces. This project also includes four garage structures, with each structure having room for four vehicles for a total of sixteen garage units. It is expected, it is expected that the total phase two development area will be just over four acres, to include the site grading, parking, sidewalks, buffers, utilities, stormwater control systems, to include the ponds, to, uh, to be sized and to support the full development of, of the multifamily buildings. In the proposed project, in total impervious areas will include one thousand seven hundred, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and eighteen square feet, or again, four, four acres. At this level of development, the project will require review against standards against the main D E P Site Location Development Act, known as SLOTA, and stormwater. Both of these reviews have been granted to the city staff under its delegated review authority. The site's stormwater treatment includes four filter ponds, all of which, which are located on the westly side of the lot, and each structure includes low-end impact development treatment for impervious rooftops with roof drip-edge, uh, stone media trench. There's no anticipated wetland impacts with this phase of the project. I will add that, um, I, I did hand out a revised, uh, staff report, uh, to you folks. We did have, uh, some late comings with our review with engineering, within city engineering. The, um, this, the drip-edge stone media trench, they, they daylight into this, um, into the riprap banks, and, uh, essentially what they're requiring in three different locations, a level lip spreader, so they really want to spread that water out when it outlets the pipe, so we're gonna, we're actually requesting a, um, essentially a, a condition for the approval of that, to include a level lip spreader. In addition to that, on the same sheet, sheet six, um, we had an adjustment on catch basin four, where the water sheet flowing across a, a tip-down area, and that's basically the walk area on a, on a sidewalk.
But I apologize for interrupt. So you mentioned sheet six, where specifically on sheet six are you discussing? Just so we can follow along what you're saying.
This would be sheet six of the city, um, response, the response to the original application.
So, there's a, there's an outlet pipe that kind of goes across... So, this, this pipe right here, see this pipe that comes out right here in this, this location? I have them highlighted on my plan, but that's an out, that's an outfall pipe that goes relatively close to the property line right there. Um, that goes from around the perimeter drain, yep, uh, yep, right there, there you go, Catherine. So, right where I have my cursor, uh, we're proposing a level lip spreader, or something to slow the water down, spread it out. Um, the engineer is suggesting a level lip spreader, um, you know, as staff, we're, we're open to another suggestion from the design engineer, from the consultant. So, we have a location here, um, there's another location, if you can move the plan down a little bit. Um, there's another one, uh, in this location here, right here. And we have another one over here, the corner of this building, right there. So, there'd be three level lip spreaders, something that would go across the grade right here, and another one right in this location, and then another one over here. And then the other, the other location is that, um, on the sidewalk, in this entranceway right here, this is a catch basin right here. Um, so, right now, the, the way that the drainage goes, it sheet flows across here, and it goes across that tip-down area, and then it flows into this catch basin. So what we're doing is, what we're suggesting is that they move the catch basin to maybe somewhere in this area right here. So, just a slight adjustment, but, um, we just want to be clear with the planning board and the public that we had a little bit of additional review, and those are the comments that we had. I had those as personal comments, but I was waiting for a P E to, to have the same one, so we were in agreement that this, these should be addressed.
Is it all for the staff report?
That, uh, no, I have, I have more.
Okay.
But is everybody clear on that?
I've got one question, John. The, it, so that actually cuts, goes underneath the parking surface? Is that, am I reading that right? Am I looking at that line right? Or am I looking at the wrong line?
Uh, are you talking about the catch basin?
Yes.
So, the catch basin, the, the water would sheet flow over, over the road, over the driveway, and, but there is a pipe underground there. Yep. It goes from one catch basin to the, to the next, and then it goes down to the stormwater pond. But it picks up the water, oh, hold on.
To the right. Right.
I think you might be asking about the underdrain pipe, uh, that crosses the parking lots.
So that's not...
That's underground as well.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, yep, yeah, those are underground.
I thought that was what you were referring to, is going, approaching the, the neighbor, so, sorry about that.
Yep, no, tho- those are approaching the neighbor, and those, those daylight on that, but there's, so the, the riprap here, um... So, this is, the, this is a riprap bank right here, and those, and that pipe goes underground, but then it, it eventually daylights mid, midway down that slope where the riprap is, and where that, where that daylights, where that outlet of that pipe is, that's where we're suggesting a level lip spreader.
You called it a level up spreader? Or a level of spreader?
Le- level lip spreader.
Level lip spreader.
Yep. It's in the suggested language for, um, and it... For a condition of approval.
Can I see that? Uh, D?
Correct.
Yeah.
Just out of question, John, the, um, to the left of building ten, is that a catch basin as well? The far-left building?
I don't see a catch basin there, but I don't, I'm not looking at the full utility plan. I'd have to look at the full utility plan, but, um, we can certainly ask the consultant to identify catch basins in those locations, but there's...
That's fine, I was just reading, I was reading the, the map, that's fine.
It's just an underdrain pipe that goes around the foundation.
Excuse me, John, just to clarify, that riprap wall, where you're talking about the level lip spreader, that's the grade that's facing the school, like gets all the sunshine all day long, correct?
Correct. So, access will be from the existing, the extension of Stone Ridge Drive from its current termination, I'm just continuing on, uh, at building five. Pavement width in this phase will be twenty-five feet, and they have extended, uh, six and a half foot wide sidewalk along the west side of the drive. A T turnaround in this area is provided for fire trucks and large service vehicles between garage structures number three and four, with utility services for power, communication, gas, sewer, water. Will also be extended underground along Stable Ridge Drive. The applicant has submitted information related to traffic, I touched a little bit on this earlier, to include a traffic impact study, um, and staff provided comments responding to staff review in a sixty-five-page memo dated January thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. The results of the submission includes a cooperative effort to address speed, pedestrian access, and safety to the site and surrounding area. The site will not generate more than a hundred trips in the peak hour and therefore would not require a traffic movement permit, but the applicant is required to still comply with article five, division four, the traffic impact analysis. The analysis includes a lane from Fairview Avenue to Park Avenue, a defined left-turn lane with stacking for Falcon Drive, Stable Ridge Development, as well as a new raised island and new crosswalk just before Fair, Fairview Avenue. This project will be completed by city staff, engineering, and cooperation with addressing traffic issues along Court Street. City engineering has completed an estimate with a contribution cost paid by the developer, recommendation of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars and thirty cents to these improvements related to five fifty-five Court Street, and again, as part of a larger holistic approach to improvements of traffic and pedestrian movements along the Court Street corridor. Um, construction is expected to start once all state municipal required permits and approvals are acquired, and then construction is expected to take, uh, twenty-four to thirty-six months in total. Staff, uh, suggest the planning board approve the site plan for the sixty-unit multifamily housing project, consisting of buildings, uh, bu- of five buildings, five sixteen thousand square foot buildings with ninety parking spaces, which meets the requirements of section sixty dash twelve, seven, seven. And further, that the applicant meets the requirements of site plan ordinance section sixty dash forty-five, section sixty dash five four nine, and section sixty dash five five four, multifamily permitted uses under the, division fourteen, T dash four point two B of the form-based code. Auburn's municipal site plan and special exception review sets forth a process for determining whether a development meets certain speci- specific criteria, which include criteria regarding stormwater management, stormwater disposal, water supply, veh- vehicle access, and other environmental effects, layout, scale, appearance, and safety with the following findings. Protection of adjacent areas against detrimental or offensive uses on the site by provisions of adequate surface water drainage, buffers against artificially reflected light, sight, sound, dust, and vibration, and preservation of light and air. Convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement with the site in relation to adjacent areas, adequacy of methods of disposal for waste, protection of environment features on the site and adjacent areas. The, the, um, staff also further finds that the condition prerequisite, the granted of special exceptions, have been met, and the applicant has provided the required evidence needed to find that the special exception sought fulfills the specific requirements set forth in the zoning ordinance relative to such, such exception, that the special exception sought will neither create nor aggravate traffic hazard or fire hazard, or any other safety hazard, that the special exception sought will not block or hamper the master development plan pattern of highway circulation, or of planned major public or semi-public land acquisitions, that the exception sought will not alter essential characteristics of the neighborhood, and will not tend to depreciate the value of property adjoining the neighborhood, the property under the application, that reasonable provisions have been made for adequate land space, lot width, lot areas, stormwater management in coord- in accordance with section sixty dash thirteen oh one fourteen, green space, driveway layout, road access, off-street parking, landscape, building separation, sewage disposal, water supply, fire safety where applicable, a plan or contract for perpetual maintenance of all common green space and clustered off-street parking areas to enge- ensure all areas will be maintained in a satisfactory manner, that the standards imposed here in all cases, at least as stringent as those elsewhere imposed by the city building code and by provisions of this chapter, that essentially the city services which will require for the project are presently available, or can be made available without disrupting the city's master plan, development plan. Auburn's municipal site plan and special exception review sets forth a process for determining whether the development meets certain speci- specific criteria, which include, again, stormwater sto- sewage disposal, water supply, vehicular access, and other environmental effects, layout, scale, appearance, and safety to meet the requirements of the main revised statute section four oh four oh two dash six referenced above. In addition, uh, staff recommends, uh, some conditions, in that no development activity until any bonding or inspection fees is determined by the Auburn Engineering Department. The applicant complies with, uh, Auburn's Water and Sewer District letter dated January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. That may include some additional... That may include some additional, um, testing to make sure that they have, uh, pressure in each of the, each of the buildings so that there could be an additional, uh, pumps or additional work that they require. As we mentioned before, an in-lu fee for off-site improvements related to transportation of $37,809.30 to be paid upon the certificate of occupancy for the first constructed building in Phase Two. So after the first building is built and they're requesting a COA from our code enforcement officer, we're going to request that they, um, pay the in-lu fee to be part of what engineering is working on for improvements along, along Court Street. And then again, sheet number six, we talked about this in detail, the level of spreader on the perimeter drain outlets and adjusting catch, catch basin number four, uh, to the uphill side of the tip-down.
Is there any more in the staff report?
That's all.
Are there any questions from members of the board?
Uh, question on the in-lu fee and the timing of the city with regard to the improvements that are proposed. Is there a timeline as to when the city intends to start those improvements? Or do we wait until the certificate of occupancy is approved and then we start? Do we have a timeline?
The, uh, the city has, um, has a plan. Uh, I believe Jonathan Labonte has already, uh, did some community outreach, uh, community conversations, I think back on February 8th, um, talking about the scope of the work. They actually have about $200,000 worth of work along Court Street. Um, they have the monies and things available to do the work. Um, this is, will essentially be a reimbursement of, of some of the work that they do and the contracting that they do and things like that. The, the plan that we're showing here is really a preliminary plan. We've got to get, uh, this ready to bid. Essentially the engineering department needs to get it ready to bid. So there'll be additional designs completed, uh, stamped set of plans with specifications and things like that that need to be procured through the city process. So, uh, we just thought because we're doing work in the area, we understand that there's been development along the area. We have a school along the area. It's been identified as a, as an area that needs improvement for traffic and pedestrian movement. Um, that, that this was going to be the first priority for the city to address that. So, um, we, we just kind of rolled this project in with that one, um, for the scope, so.
So I have a question. So just looking at the, um, the traffic study. So when I look at very high level, look at it, it says traffic impact study, Stable Ridge Apartments, Phase Two, 60 units. When you had shared originally, this traffic study was for Phase One and Phase Two. So where would I find reference in this traffic study that this is Phase One and Phase Two traffic that was taken into consideration?
There, there, the numbers that are included are numbers, is a totality of all the traffic numbers that are included in the traffic study. So, um, in the individual, if you look at the individual, like turning lanes and, and numbers from each of the intersections, that's a, that's a culmination of, of both projects and the surrounding traffic. So they have to look at everything in combination of. They don't look at, they look at the impacts of, of this particular project, but they, they also look at what's, what's going on. They have, so they have, uh, traffic numbers and things like that where they study, uh, set times and, and they get traffic numbers based on certain areas and then they make assumptions where improvements should be.
Sure. So refresh my memory. Was there a traffic study for Phase One?
Uh, there was an analysis, but not a full traffic study. So there was an analysis done for site distance, an estimate of the number of trips and that they could exit or enter the site safely. Um, it triggered a need for, um, sort of an enhanced entrance to their site, but it didn't rise to the level of needing a left turn into the site off of Court Street. Um, this additional traffic does rise to need that, um, left turn lane and where the city was intending to make improvements along the corridor. We wouldn't, didn't want them to bid the improvements that are required to make their traffic safe separately and not have those coordinated with the larger corridor improvements that the city wanted.
Okay. Can you point easily, maybe it's possible, maybe it's not possible, where I can see some figures from Phase One and then Phase Two. So the numbers of, this is what we're anticipating for Phase One from, uh, traffic volume at peak hours and then in addition to that, Phase Two and what those numbers look like.
These, these tables are a roll-up of, of the.
And if it's easier for the applicant to answer these, you can clearly direct me that way as well.
Yeah, we can, we can, uh, we can let the applicant answer that question.
So I forgot my readers at home. Is this something that's in my packet and you can show me where to, to find it?
Yeah, if you, if you look at these two tables, it's page three of the traffic, uh, impact analysis. The top table, table one is Phase One. Um, that shows 60 dwelling units and the trip assignments for different times a day. Um, for Phase One in the top table. Um, the bottom table is Phase Two. Um, they look very similar because they're 60 pretty much identical units, um, in either phase. Um, but then the report combines those numbers to be the total traffic for, um, the combination of Phase One and Phase Two. You'll see at the top of each of those tables, there's a label that says the top one is Phase One. Uh, the bottom one is Phase Two, but with 60 similar units in either phase, the numbers are, are identical. And the, the next page has the summary of the two tables at the top.
Are you in the appendix or are you in the, the body of the report?
The body of the report.
Body, yeah, page four.
Which is in the original, um, which is in the original city's middle, yep.
Yeah, page three is the breakdown of Phase One and Phase Two in separate tables. Page four at the top is the com- combination of the traffic for both phases.
Yeah, I don't think my packet has it.
Yeah, I think it issues that there are a lot of page threes and page fours, but, um.
We can certainly blow up this one on the screen so it's easier to read from a distance, um, and switch to whatever page you want to see.
That'd be helpful.
While members are reviewing that, are there any other questions for staff?
I have another traffic study question, um, with regard to, it sounds like the initial study was done during the summer and then a PM re-update was done that was then extrapolated uh, to all AM and PM. Did I read that correctly?
I, I know there were additional counts to make sure that the counts were done during the school year. I think the applicant could probably speak more specifically to exactly how they did that.
Okay. I'm specifically looking to see if it was ever done in the AM because certainly to me, the afternoon hour has people after school, there's after school activities, there's, and I don't know whether or not it truly can be extrapolated to the AM without a dedicated AM study. So I guess something to think about when the applicant comes up.
They did do a, an AM week, weekday peak hour study. Um, it was 58 trips. So it was actually less than the, than the afternoon peak hour trips of 70.
Other questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Um, referring to page three, item two, we spoke about special exception sought will neither create nor aggravate a traffic hazard, fire hazard or any other safety hazard. I'm kind of thinking outside the box and I don't know if this has been addressed or considered or thought of. With our school right there, has any risk assessment been, uh, carried out specifically regarding the new building one that we see on sheet six regarding line of sight or distances from the balconies of those buildings or the windows of those buildings to the school itself where children congregate for recess or sporting activities?
Can you say that again?
I'm curious if a risk assessment has been done regarding the line of sight or distances from what we know as the new building ones seen on sheet six to student congregation areas, recess areas and sporting areas of Auburn Middle School.
I don't see building one on sheet six unless you're looking at a different sheet, seven through.
I'm referring to the sheet we were going over a few moments ago where you're talking about the, the drainage systems. If you look in that sheet, you see new building one on the lower right corner.
Okay, I think that's number seven.
Okay. Well, on sheet six, I just see the nomenclature as new building one. I can only assume that's the building one of Phase Two. And my question is whether or not there's been any risk assessments or studies regarding line of sight or distances from any of those balconies or anything like that to the congregation areas of the students for recess, sporting events or whatever along those lines, basically thinking about student safety and, uh, distances for privacy or even some of the worst considerations that happen now in America.
We, we don't have any information about line of sight distances from buildings to playgrounds.
All right, thank you.
Additional questions?
What is the percentage of, um, for the first phase, like that people are actually being rented? So it would mean something different with traffic. I feel like if, if the percentage of people living there wasn't very high.
I think that's a question that we can certainly ask the developer. Uh, that, that would be something that we should, and we could ask them. I, I don't have that information, but we could ask them.
They're talking about blasting. I'm just curious if there was any like complaints or concerns about blasting in Phase One with neighbors.
We, we did a, we did a fair amount of work on that. Um, so they came out with a, a blasting graphic, um, that essentially the, the ordinance isn't, you know, really, we, we talk about 300 feet and a lot of that is based on insurance stuff and that's the pre, pre-blasting survey. There's a graphic, um, hopefully Catherine can, can bring it up, but, um, anywhere that that, and within the lot, if it doesn't, if it hits the building or hits the lot, that building is going to get a, an opportunity for, uh, pre-blasting survey. So out to 300 feet. In addition to that, we looked at, um, be- because of the considerations and the concerns that we had looked at some OSHA recommendations. They don't, there's no specific law, but there's recommendations where if there's a significant amount of blasting, you could go out to 600 feet. So we, they, the, in the packet, um, there's a notice of black blasting, uh, to the abutters that, that, that the applicant is willing to do out to 600 feet. Um, is, they included a list of.
I definitely saw that, but my question is, were there any complaints for Phase One from blasting?
We, we did have calls, um, and we had some complaints. We worked with the developer and the blasting company and through staff to try to address those concerns. Um, I think we satisfied most of them. You know, I can't say that we made everybody perfectly happy with having the development app next door, but um, we did address those complaints one, one by one and there were not a lot of different people, um, but there were a couple of people that called, you know.
Was it just noise complaints?
Uh, noise and, um, one lady in particular had concerns that she felt rattling or, um, you know, percussion uh, during some of the blast.
I'd like to carry on with Tony's question. I'm sorry to interrupt. Were there any reports either to the city through municipal, um, avenues of any damage to underground piping, be sewer, water supply, either municipal or private as a result of the blasting from Phase One?
Uh, I'm not aware of any. Um, we talked to a few people, like I said, some more often than others, but not aware of any actual physical damage.
I can say that I, you know, I, I talked to Mike Broadent, uh, who's the Sewer and Water District Superintendent, current superintendent almost daily. I haven't, he hasn't mentioned anything to me. But there's, you know, there was some, some, uh, some concern about notifications. So we really went through the notification process, I think a little bit more thorough in this phase than we did the first phase. And we really had some clear maps on what the expectation was of the developer. I think it's a little bit more clear now. I think we, I think we set a standard for new projects going forward, so.
And that's the timed audible warnings, giving countdowns that you mentioned, correct?
That is correct. Yep. Uh, the, in the sample pre-blasting letter, there's actually the Audibles International Blasting System Warning System that starts with three signals and then a five-minute prior to blast and then two signals ready to blast and then the one signal is all clear after blast. So the, these folks are getting this information now, so they understand it a little bit better. Uh, it's very specific in what the blasters need to do based on, um, state licensing requirements. And, and a lot of it's, um, you know, safety requirements, um, that they have to do OSHA or, or their insurance requirements.
Understood. Thank you. Um, I was not, it's probably in here and I, I can't find it, but should this move forward, the blasting for Phase Two, do we know when that would occur? Would that be summer kind of months or would that be winter months when we have frost and more rigid ground?
I think that's a question that we can ask the developer in terms of timing, um, on how that would all play out or the consultant may have a better idea. I could make an assumption, but I, I, I would rather have it come from them.
Understood. My primary concern is that there was no, uh, structural damage to any underground utilities, either municipal or private as a result of the blasting. That's my primary question.
And they're, they're very, um, cognizant of that as well. I had an opportunity to meet with the developer and the blasting company because we had specific questions around that. The amount of blasting that it will take for this entire site is smaller than what they might do in a single blast in a gravel mining operation. Um, but they're much more careful in a site like this and they start with, um, the pre-blast surveys for everybody that wants them. Um, and then they start by placing seismographs strategically around the site. And then they start with very small charges and measure those movements in the surrounding sites near things that they want to make sure that, you know, don't get damaged like a water tank or a, a home foundation. Um, and then they slowly increase those sizes. Um, unless the seismograph shows movement, that's unacceptable and they would stay at smaller blasts rather than larger blasts.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I guess, and just to add one little piece to that, um, during the blasting, uh, when they do blast, they have what's called blasting mats. So they lay those down and they're made of, of, you know, rubber tires essentially roped together and they lay that over the blasting area. So that really kind of keeps the flying rock and things like that from, from doing its thing, so.
The amount of blasting for Phase Two, is it equal, less, more than Phase One?
Um, I think, I think it's, it's pretty much equal, but we can ask the consultant if they've done any takeoffs yet. Um, there is, there's certainly going to be some blasting on this project without a doubt. So that's why we spend a lot of time putting. That's why we spend a lot of time putting the blasting plans together, making sure that the notifications are completed and, and doing the pre-blasting surveys.
Additional questions?
Just a question about impervious areas. I know, is there any regulation or recommendation on a total percentage of total area that the city prefers or requires? Or is that not something that actually has a code?
There's, there's total, there's total area under the foreign-based code of, say, building, there's building area and parking area, but those are pretty, those are relatively liberal numbers under this foreign-based code, up to sixty, seventy percent, depending on which, which one you're at. I think it's sixty percent here. So it's, yeah, so it's seventy percent for building lot coverage. And so it's, you could have quite a bit of, of areas. The, the treatment areas are not included in that when you do that calculation, so the, the four ponds and the, the drip edges, those wide drip edges around the structures, those aren't included in that area. And then you, you factor that in, and then, and then the grass area, and, and they've got some picnic areas, and add all that up, it's, it's not, it's not near seventy percent of, of the lots.
And also, when the impervious area gets to be over a certain threshold, it's, four point oh three acres is proposed for this project, then it goes to, Auburn has delegated review authority through Maine, through the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. And so there, they receive that application, and, and we work with them on looking at that, too.
To be clear, we're reviewing this as site plan as special exception, not a subdivision, because we're allowed to do so under state law?
That's correct, yeah. I did include that in the text. I didn't read it all, but under subsection four, four oh two, the division of newer existing structures, there's some state statute as of July first of two thousand eighteen that's very clear that we could, we can review this project under site, site plan review.
Open space requirement for a site plan as special exception is, what, like, ten, ten-ish, fifteen percent, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, yep.
And this has that open space, this meets, back to the question earlier, this meets, we can ask impervious, or we can ask for open space, or say, does this meet the open space requirement for?
Yeah, it's, the total impervious for the site, for both sites is, is under, under eight acres, so this, there's less here than it was in the first phase. And the total site is fifty, over fifteen acres, so we're somewhere around fifty percent, sixty percent.
Fifty percent, sixty percent open space, or fifty percent?
Yeah, open, open space, yep.
So that would meet the requirements even under subdivision law?
Yeah, it would, it would in this particular case.
That's thirty percent, correct?
Yep.
Is this land being used for anything currently?
Uh, it was, it wasn't, it was a, originally it was a farm, I think it was a farm, it was a farmhouse that was there that was, that was raised during phase one. And then, so that was essentially the backland. This is the backland of that, of that original lot, so that's, it was just essentially open space, privately owned, open space.
So can we go back to the traffic? Can you help me understand, maybe everyone else is there and I'm not, how this left lane is going to mitigate the traffic, especially around school hours when the buses and people are doing drop-off and people are going to work?
So the left, the left lane gives us safe means of egress. Oftentimes, you know.
Like, is it a mandatory lane to be used, or is it just, you can use it if you want?
Nope, it's a mandatory lane change, so there's gonna be a separate lane from the actual traffic moving. So that'll, that'll, in itself, will keep the traffic moving, too. It won't back up the traffic. They, we're anticipating one for the school and one for the, and one for the, the new development, so there'll be.
Anticipating, or it's going to happen?
It's gonna happen.
Okay.
It's gonna happen. It's a part of requirements, it's a condition of the approval. So that, it'll be, that'll be constructed, and there's stacking appropriate of what the traffic count numbers are, so it was designed by a traffic engineer, so in theory, that the, the turning lane is, they're gonna have an appropriate stacking there. In, in addition to this, by the school, if we're talking about the school, we're, we're, because we're creating this turning lane, they're, they're providing an additional pedestrian walkway, a raised pedestrian walkway at this location, too, so, so kids can get, and people can get across the street safely, so. That, that's in conjunction with this project, too. There, the applicant is actually on the hook for paying for some of that. That was included in the engineer's estimate of thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Am I picturing that correctly? It's gonna be an elevated walking bridge over the road?
Not, not a bridge, but a, more of a raised, a raised sidewalk to, to let folks know that they need to slow down and, and to give them, give the pedestrians presence on the road. So the profile is raised slightly on the roadway, so people know that, that, you know, it's, it's a crosswalk. It's not just paint on the ground that can sometimes get covered by snow. It's actual, a physical raise that, you know, that essentially gives pedestrians safety to, to cross the road. The other part of this, too, is, is as we introduce bike lanes, these turning lanes, and define all these separate lanes that are occurring here, it, it, what it does is, is it gives the, a tighter feeling, and in, in essence, that should slow traffic down in that location. And I think that's an important piece for, you know, if we think about schools and we think about the people using that area. It's a, it's a good way that traffic engineers, how they design things, tighten things up to slow traffic down. I think it's a, it's a good technique.
Yeah, so, excuse me, I'll just say this. I think traffic is already slow there anyway, right? Like, so I, I personally avoid that, that space during that time because it's already slow. So, so you're saying with these new additions, it's gonna be slower?
Yeah, I think the intent is for it to be slower, yep.
And to get to your explanation, would it be safe to say an example of what you're talking about would be?
In front of Washburn on Lake Auburn Avenue?
Yeah, I was gonna say, in front of Washburn on Lake Auburn Avenue, or if you're not familiar with that, perhaps the intersection of Davis and Lake Street would also be a.
Or Beach Hill Road?
It, I mean, John, John's explanation is good as far as slowing traffic down. I think it also, if you're going there during those peak times, you're not necessarily just slowing down. A lot of times you have to stop because you're waiting for somebody that wants to make a left turn. In that sense, it will keep those through cars moving. They may be going slower than they would if there wasn't any friction or any other traffic on the road. But it allows people to pull out of that travelway, wait to make their left while you can still proceed.
I'm still stuck on the elevated walkway. We're talking about the physical characteristics of what's in front of Washburn on Lake Auburn Avenue, something like that? Is that what you mean by, it's like a giant speed bump, basically? Is that what that is?
There's, there's one at High and Elm as well.
All right, thank you.
That's an entirely elevated intersection. This would be a narrower elevated portion, that is the crosswalk. But yeah, I think it is, I think the one at Lake Street is very similar.
Additional questions?
I have a question with regard to the memo from Superintendent Michael Broadbent to you, Eric. On the back page with regards to the district does not have enough information to evaluate the SRBS is adequately sized. It's imperative this issue is addressed before this project is approved and before we give capacity to serve notice. So have we gotten those answers, and do we have the superintendent's go-ahead? Or has, or are his issues still open?
Yeah, we, we received a domestic flow study, a demand summary. The engineer provided that to them. Mike has looked at that, and he's, he's in agreeance with that. I, I left it in as a condition of the approval because we can always go back to this letter specifically, and sometimes what we write on paper doesn't necessarily equate to what we're gonna get in a building. And so in terms of fire suppression, meeting the, the demand and the requirement for that, particularly with life safety, is something that is concerning the staff, so I just, I just left the, his letter in there so we could reference the requirements.
Are there any additional questions?
Seeing none, at this point, we would invite the applicant or agent for the applicant to come forward. We'd ask them to either answer any questions they feel they can answer based on the discussion between staff and the planning board, or add any additional information they think would be pertinent. So just please, because we're on record, begin by stating your name and what capacity you're presenting to the board.
My name is Mike Gatto. I'm with Sony Brookland Use. I'm here tonight with Jessica Clement, who is the American Development Group representative. I put together the application materials and coordinated with the traffic engineers and other folks involved. I, I'm not sure I can remember all of the questions, so I'm gonna try to answer them, but please ask me if I missed something. I think someone asked that this was originally a farm that was stolen down, and most of the backland now that you're seeing has been cleared of trees so that we could get in and do the testing we needed to for phase two. And so it's vacant land at this point. There was a discussion about area and impervious area and stuff like that. We have given numbers for four point oh three acres of total impervious area, which is all the buildings, all the pavement, all the sidewalks, all of the things that you see that are impervious. It's a thirteen-acre site, so if somebody does the math, I think it's about twenty-five, thirty percent, thirty percent, I guess, of, of the area is proposed to be impervious. In my cover letter, I tried to give some of those areas. We had two smittles, too, folks, and I think you got both of them. We had the first smittle, and then we had a response smittle, and there's traffic data in both, and so you have to go back and forth to see all of the stuff. In my cover letter, I also did the building coverage, which was eight point six percent, we're allowed seventy percent. And then there's something called usable open space. I defined usable open space as something that wasn't steep stope and usable garden space and stuff like that. We have some community gardens and, and other green spaces around the building and stuff, and I calculated that we had usable open space of seventeen point seven percent of the site, and we're required to have ten percent as usable. Okay, here, I'm sorry, I had a note here that said that thirty-one percent was the impervious ratio of the site, and open space sixty-nine percent, total green graded, you know, total open space is sixty-nine percent of the site. Traffic, on the traffic, we did a traffic study, which I think we ultimately found, phase two traffic study, and then we did a, a number of assessments of traffic along the Court Street corridor that staff has to do in response, look at timing of pedestrian movements and things like that. Our traffic study indicated that we needed to do a left-turn lane for traffic going inbound to town, a left-turn lane to get into our entrance. And it also said we had to extend the left-turn lane on Park Avenue for people turning, going into town, turning left onto Park Avenue, so that the traffic movement, those left-turn folks would be able to stay in the left-turn lane, and the people going straight would be able to go by. That's all based on traffic engineering numbers that are nationally published, and all the traffic numbers that we're using, because you can't count a project that isn't built, is based on national standards and for this type of use, multifamily use. And that's how we come up with the trip generations, and that's how the traffic engineers work through that process, determine, you know, at this case, the maximum peak hour. We're always looking at the maximum peak hour. We did counts AM, PM, and at-school let-out, so that we could do it. We even counted pedestrians crossing Park, Park Avenue. So we did all those counts, physical counts, and then they added numbers to it for growth because this is gonna be projected out and also added to when they're doing the numbers. It came up to seventy peak hour trips was the main, was highest number that was coming. So hopefully I can, you know, for the follow-up questions, I can try to help you with, with those. Blasting, we met with Eric and the blasting company because blasting was a concern. Last phase one, we ultimately told city staff they should give everybody who calls with a blasting question Jessica's number, and she would follow up, and I think she did that towards the end of the first phase of blasting. There will be more blasting on this phase than there was on the first phase, from what I understand, based on doing the design plans. When we met with the blasting company, they said the insurance company asks them to do pre-blast surveys within a hundred feet and to notify people within three hundred. We're talking with staff, we went three hundred feet for pre-blast surveys, and we went six hundred feet for notifications. And that'll be one letter that everybody gets in those, those two different letters, one to, for the zero to three hundred, and then another one for three hundred to six hundred. They'll get those letters, and those, they'll have the blasting company, and I added to the form Jessica's information. And if there's a safety consultant that's involved, they'll get those person's numbers as well, so they'll have contact information. And obviously, they can always call city staff if they want, if they have questions during, during the, the project. There was a question about a study of distance from the athletic fields. There was no study done, but the blasting plan does show a three-hundred-foot setback to the blasting area, so it's probably two hundred and fifty feet or so to the school property line from our property line. As you can see there, so the blasting is basically where a lot of the development's occurring and three-hundred-foot set, so I think. You know, so I, again, I think there is some separation there, and our buildings are up, up away from that, so. No study done. We didn't, we didn't know that question was something we needed to look at. Counts, blasting, timing, we, we expect, you know, we might get started this winter with, with the blasting if we get all the approvals in place, because we'd like to start now and, and get an early start for construction season, and that's something that can be done at any time of year. We do a lot of blasting for projects all over the place, and blasting can be done at any time. And blasting can be done, I did blasting for the OR at St. Mary's Hospital. You know, we blasted right next to the OR. It can be done, as Eric pointed out, and/or John, that they started a real small blast. They measured what the ground's doing, and then they work from there to get the blasting done. We believe we can do it safely, obviously. The question I had for staff and for you to consider is that, I understand late tonight that they got comments from the engineering department, we have no problems with moving the catch basin. I think there's better solutions than a level spreader, so I'd like the board or the, or folks to consider a condition that allows us to work out the engineering staff's concerns on those discharge points and figure the best and easiest way to do it. Level spreader may not be the easiest way to do it, because there are other ways to do it. So I'd like to be able to have the chance to talk to staff and talk with them about the flows and how we can mitigate those flows if they're concerned. I think that's all I have. I mean, I'll answer any questions that you folks have and try to respond to.
Mike, I think you did a great job responding to almost all the questions. The only one I have noted came from Tony, and Tony asked a specific question about the percentage of units that were rented for phase one. I think it was specifically with regard to traffic counts. And correct me if I'm wrong, I'll let you feel that, but I think that's the only thing that I didn't get.
And that's why I said that we do the counts on national standards. So the multifamily unit generates so many trips per unit, and they do the math based on that, so it doesn't matter. So it doesn't matter, we're doing math based on what the state is telling us we have to use as numbers, and it doesn't matter whether they're occupied or not, because we're adding in a number that is a national average across the country.
No, that's fine. I was also just curious in general, but how long has Phase One been able to be rented out, and what is the percentage that it is, that the units are rented?
I'd have to have Jessica answer that question, if you could, if you don't mind. She can answer that one. The other one on left-turn lanes, again, it's a number crunching thing. You get more than 25 left turns in a peak hour, you have to put the left-turn lane in. And that's why we had to put left-turn lanes on the thing. So Jessica, if you can.
Yeah, sure. So as of right now, we have occupancy for two of our buildings. We just received occupancy for a third. So we have the first two buildings 100% leased out. We've had phased move-ins, so probably 70% of buildings one and two have been moved. Those units are now occupied, and then the remainder over the next week, week and a half. So I think overall, when we look across our five buildings, we now have a waitlist for our two bedrooms, and we have a handful of one-bedrooms that we're leasing up currently, and we probably have 170-plus leads to get back to.
So, quick question, too. Is there a Phase Three after Phase Two?
There is not.
Nope. I just want to understand, sorry. So you have two out of the five buildings that are 100%, or did you say 70%?
So they're 100% leased. We have occupancy permits for both buildings. We just actually received occupancy permit for our third. And so the first two buildings, because we've had, you know, a couple of weeks now since we received occupancy permits, we probably have 70% of those tenants having moved in, and then the remainder are moving in over the next week, week and a half.
Are you going to have more two-bedroom apartments in the next phase?
Yes, so that's a good question. Because of the response we've seen to our two-bedroom units just leasing up, even single occupants really interested in that second bedroom for a home office or additional storage, we've converted our building design to be all two-bedroom units. So 100% of those units in the second phase will be two-bedroom.
Are there any three-bedroom units?
There are not, so they're all two-bedroom.
And so from, a theme going on here, so from an occupancy standpoint, do you limit the amount of vehicles that someone can have per unit?
So of all of the tenants that we've had lease so far, I would say the vast majority are one-vehicle, some have two-vehicles. But at this point, we've not run into any issue from a capacity parking standpoint, if that answers your question.
Yes, my question is, do you, like, kind of like, no pets, no smoking, only two cars? Like, you don't put a limit on cars?
So we do. We've made an exception for maybe one tenant who has a company vehicle. So it's a husband and a wife, and let's say they have a company vehicle as well. So in that instance, we've made that exception, and they're parking that third vehicle off to the back, so they're not impacting anyone close up. Yep.
This, Mike, either staff or Mr. Gatto might be able to answer this. In regard to the stormwater runoff, has that been measured in gallons per hour? Or do we have an idea of, like, worst-case scenario, super bad summer thunderstorm? What kind of water quantities are we looking at coming out of those drains?
Not an engineer. Done a lot of studies and paid a lot of engineers to do a lot of work. Cubic feet per second flow, and it's based on a two-year storm event, a 10-year storm event, and a 25-year storm event with emergency spillways for a 100-year storm event. So yes, we have calculations on about 300 pages of things that come off a computer that tell the engineering department how much water is coming off this end. And we're treating it for not only quantity, we're also treating it for quality.
And you said we're prepped. Your plans are prepared for a 100-year event?
There's always an emergency spillway for a 100-year event. Each one of our stormwater ponds has a spillway out for it.
I guess just to add to that, our city engineer has reviewed the HydroCAD, where those calculations occur, and he concur that they're meeting their threshold for those stormwater events that Mike's referring to for the two, 10, 25, and 100-year storms.
Thank you, John.
You had mentioned a community garden and a picnic area. Is this for renters to grow their own gardens?
Yep.
Is there also playground area for children?
So we don't have a built-in playground area, but we know we've got direct connectivity behind the middle school, and so they'll be able to have full access to the walking trails and the mountain biking trails out behind the school.
I've got a question about, I guess it's a two-part question, and it was raised by the Water District. When we first, when Phase One came before us, the Phase Two was planned to be townhouses. And maybe you answered it with a demand for two apartments, and that's why, but what changed between then and now to make it all apartment buildings and not townhouses?
Economics. What happens when you're doing a project is that you don't want to be building something that you can't meet market rate to sell. If we were to do townhomes out here on the second phase, you'd be doing a moderate-sized townhome. You'd get less units, and you'd probably have to sell that unit for $850,000 to maybe break even. So by doing the apartments, we're able to cover the cost and have more density to spread those numbers out. So it's really the economics. When she started this project, it changed significantly, and I think they made some adjustments to save a lot of money, but the pump station was more money. Everything because of the cost during this period was higher.
That was my second part about the pump station, so the Stable Ridge Booster Station. Is there, there's definitely the capacity for it to be up. Is there any chance that you run into a spot where you actually can't scale this up to the needs of the apartment buildings' fire protection?
We had it designed, I was part of that system, because it came after the first phase. We had it designed by an engineer. We gave out a report in our response from Haley and Ward, where they designed it to the department's standards. And as I understand it, Mike has accepted that. So we know we can give them the water they need to fight the fire and to serve the folks that live in there. Backup systems as well, yeah?
And just to add to that point, so I think for the first question, you know, we had full intention early on that this be a multi-use development or mixed-use development. So certainly, we had every hope to have multifamily and townhomes and condos. And I think as we got further along with our site work, that's when we learned how difficult this particular property was, which is another reason why it's so beautiful. But there was a lot of additional site costs. And so we started to revisit our performa for Phase Two. And, you know, to Mike's point, that's where we learned we would be building townhomes and condos that no one can afford, and they would be moderate at that, just because of the infrastructure cost. But we also saw that the demand was so high for housing in this particular area and for our particular development, we wanted to push forward with Phase Two. And we wanted to take the opportunity to allow more individuals to join Stable Ridge, and that's why we're looking at multifamily. I think the timing of that, while we were doing, working with the engineer team on our pump station, was timed well, because we had to make that decision, and that's where we said we need to design this pump for maximum capacity of the site, for this site distance back from the road and highest point of elevation for multifamily. And so that's what our designers ensured that they did when they designed the pump station.
Additional questions?
Could I provide one clarification?
Yes.
We have dedicated staff in engineering and transportation, I guess, at home tonight, and they've corrected me on the raised crosswalk. It's leaning towards a raised island, so that there's a crosswalk that's at road grade. But as you approach that crosswalk, Court Street becomes divided by an island that's raised. So you sort of feel like you're now entering this pedestrian, more in-town environment, and slow those speeds down. But the crosswalk is flat. The island is raised to provide refuge.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Eric.
One more question. So two out of the five are rented, and then the building three is almost, you just got your occupancy permit?
So two of the five we have, or really, three of the five we have occupancy.
And so is four and five done?
Four and five, we are finishing finishes inside the building, so we can get occupancy inspection. But we have units leased through all five buildings. We have deposits through all five buildings and tenants who are waiting to move in. So as those buildings receive occupancy, we've had to time to allow our residents to be able to plan. So we've projected occupancy timeframes, and they're waiting. Yep.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to enter into the public comment section of the hearing. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, all those in favor, with one abstention, Mr. Bergeron, due to absence. I assume he's taking a short break. So, public comment section of the public hearing will proceed as follows. We ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. I will keep time. We ask that you begin by stating your name and address. That is because our meetings are recorded, and that is for public record. Additionally, we ask that you keep your comments pertinent to the specific public hearing at hand. In this case, the specific site plan review and special exception request. So having said that, any member of the public who wishes to speak at this time is invited to do so, please do so at the podium.
Spencer Dunn, 530 Court Street. I understand that our policy stances of late have been to make accommodations at every possible opportunity to whichever developers offer up the most financing. I'm disheartened by the disregard to existing stakeholders' concerns on policies and projects that affect vast swaths of Auburn. I already stated nearly a year ago what my reasonable recommendations to this body would be pertaining to development and zoning at this site. Now, in this second phase, we may have to deal with expansionary changes to the traffic patterns in an area with already mishandled traffic speeds and volumes to accommodate one of the largest and most expensive-to-live-in housing projects ever built in Auburn, nowhere near walking distance to most services and amenities. This is all despite numerous claims that there were no serious concerns over traffic changes or traffic management during the original Phase One proposal period for this project. First and foremost, I am concerned about the disregard for existing residents that live on this stretch of Court Street. A proposed special left-hand turning lane exclusively for residents of Stable Ridge to turn left into their area will not easily afford the preventers at 540 Court Street the opportunity to turn left into their home. And the also-proposed center turn lane would not exist there. Beyond that, these proposals would force all residents to cross not one, but two lanes' worth of stopped and moving traffic to turn left out of their homes. Given the actual speed conditions on this road, this is unacceptable. Beyond this lack of consideration exhibited in the traffic analysis, the two-way left-turning lane expansion included in the proposal for the rest of the road stretch from the Fairview Avenue intersection to the Park Avenue intersection flies in the face of pedestrian and resident-friendly planning best practices. This proposed expansion of total lanes to add an additional two-way center-left turning lane is not for the safety of residents. It is mostly for the non-local through traffic. An entirely residential, 25 mile-per-hour, two-lane collector road with scores of driveways and local roads off of it is increasingly being used by much of its traffic as a high-speed throughway to avoid dealing with numerous lights and cumbersome rotaries on roads that were actually designed to function as high-volume, higher-speed roads. Rather than address that, we are now proposing possibly expansionary traffic changes that will force local residents to get out of the way of the non-local traffic that wishes to pass through at high speeds without having to be concerned about the people who live here. This proposed lane addition is fundamentally car-centric and traffic-enabling. It doesn't make existing residents' lives any safer or easier, because the volume and speed of the non-local traffic passing through will stay the same or get worse without the addition of barriers along the bike lanes or shoulder deterrents. Sitting in a narrow two-way center-left turning lane while passenger vehicles and GPS-guided trucks whiz by going 10, 15, and 20 miles per hour over the posted speeds is not a solution for anyone living here. I understand that all this development is going to be bringing in more tax revenue for Auburn and lots of income for their owners and new homes for their residents. I also understand that large-scale, high-end rental-only developments by corporate developers are only going to be more common and larger in scale. These policies are filling Auburn with new apartments that are $500 to $800 above the local average that will cater almost exclusively to higher-income, often previously-out-of-area residents who don't want to pay higher premiums to live in smaller units in larger town or cities and see Auburn as the last nearby affordable option. That's not going to last long. Developers can come here and hop on soapboxes to claim that their nearly $2,000 apartments will solve the housing affordability crisis in an area where most existing residents wouldn't qualify to rent them. Meanwhile, existing landlords chase these new higher comps on their own dated properties, citing the changing market rate. Filtering, where? If we must bend over backwards to let high-end developers and local landlords bleed residents dry in the name of more high-value buildings and increased tax revenue, the least this board of laypeople and our staff could do is actually make sure that the safety and concerns of existing and future residents crosses their radar. My recommendation would be to keep the two lanes as they currently are. Adding turning lanes, regardless of the trips generated by this new property, is not a solution here. If throughcars don't want to stop or slow down for the turning local traffic, they can opt to take different existing routes with higher posted speeds. If this proposal is to be adopted in any form and a lane expansion must occur, my secondary recommendation is to maintain the proposed two-way left-center turning lane along this whole stretch where signals and extra lanes don't already exist, in front of the middle school and at the Park Avenue signal. The available proposals in their current forms are not going to solve existing traffic problems in this part of the Court Street corridor for the people who actually live here. Thank you, and happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I will say, you are always a well-rehearsed to the moment. You are, I just got to say, you are excellent, getting your point across in the time, so kudos to you. Yes, all right. I apologize, but...
That's okay. I'm Pam Russo, 745 West Auburn Road, and I just have some thoughts. One of the things that said that, what, that, one of the requirements was this would not change the character of the neighborhood, and I find that very, very hard to believe. Or could it change, or change the tax? I bet you that with a large development like this, it's going to lower the tax of the value of houses. A traffic light would be really good, but who would pay for that? Auburn or the developer? I went to the meeting at the Lake Auburn, I mean, the Auburn Water District, and this is about the pump station that they put in. Now, the Auburn Water District, I should, I forgot to bring my phone. You're not, they're not supposed to, in their agreement, that any development is not supposed to be a burden on AWD. And I realize that the Public Utility, I can't even say it, Utility Commission did side with the developer. But having done that, and I just talked to Mike Broadbent and the staff there, there's going to be about, without inflation, about $15,000 for Lake Auburn District, the Lake Auburn Water District will have to suck up and eat to take care of that station in propane fees for generating... In propane fees for generators, in maintenance fees for the land, checking it weekly for, for all that stuff. It's going to cost about fifteen thousand dollars a year. Again, that is without, who's going to pay that? Okay, they're not, because they got the PUC to side with them, and now that is going to be on the ratepayers of Auburn. Um, and it's really important to realize that there's not enough water pressure up there without pumps. And that is something that I didn't know until I started coming to these, uh, the Stable Ridge, Planning Board meetings and going to the Auburn Water District meetings. And I've also got a curiosity, is the cost of the water from the str, the store, cost of the stormwater going into, the system that it goes to, how much does that cost? Who pays for that? There are just some thoughts.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ryan Smith, I live at fourteen Weaver Street. The first part I want to talk about is conformance to T-4.2B. These buildings contain more than, uh, five units per building, and in a financing sense, those are considered commercial, not residential, even though they are used for residential purposes. So, in the T-4.2B ordinance, it states that you must have more than forty percent of window and door coverage if it's a commercial property, which this is, because if it's four or less units, it's considered residential. Five and more is considered commercial. And in the, uh, packet, it states that it's not forty percent window and door coverage on the first floor. So, I do have an issue with that. Something else is when I looked at the, um, according to our planning board policies, section eight, uh, Article Eight, Section F, all materials must be posted on the website five days beforehand. I looked last week and not all the materials were on there, including the exterior elevations. And then I just logged into my phone and I noticed there was a lot more information. So, I'm just curious when the rest of that was posted, because I, I couldn't find it last week, and then I saw it this week. I actually wanted to speak to the traffic, because I actually went to the Court Street traffic meeting, uh, at the high school last week. This plan here is not up to us, and it actually has not even gone before the state, the Maine DOT. The Maine DOT actually has to approve all this, and the staff member that was at the meeting last week giving the presentation, which was fantastic, by the way, that sort of public engagement is something that a lot of people could, uh, use as an example, I should say. But basically, they were saying, they're not even meeting with DOT to even pitch this until this Thursday. So, I don't understand how we can even, I mean, the traffic study analysis is saying we need this lane, but we don't even have approval for it. We haven't even pitched it yet. So, I don't understand how we can pass this based on speculation that the Maine DOT is all of a sudden going to let us have some leeway on Court Street. We've been trying for years to get stuff by. And if you call the department and say, hey, what can we do about this? Every answer they give you is, we can't do anything, because the Maine DOT won't let us. So, again, I, I don't, it's not making very much sense to me, um, that we could do this, because it seems almost incomplete to me. Something else I have a concern about is right here on the screen. When people are turning right into the middle school, you know, when I drive back from work going up this road, because I live just down the road from this, traffic is backed up to this development. And people are in the breakdown lane, in the right lane, trying to get into the middle school, and then people are going around them to the left. And it's backed up. What happens when you make this three lanes? And now, people don't have that breakdown lane to get into, to go into the middle school. It's going to be backed up to the high school. So, I, I don't understand how that makes sense either, because, again, if you, if you actually live here and you drive the roads, you'll realize that this doesn't make sense at all. And if I'm in the Maine DOT hands, I look at this and I laugh, and I say, that's not going to work, um, which I think is going to happen. Just one more thing I want to add, because this is a special exception. Um, I understand we're not under site plan review, just, I'm, I'm just a.
For the record, we are on both.
Sorry, we're not under subdivision review, we're under site plan review, correct? Sorry, that's what I meant to say. I just want to say as a citizen, just how disappointed I am in this development to begin with. I mean, it's, it looks way worse than I thought it would. It's, in my mind, a monstrosity, um, does not belong in this area at all. And I could see an out-of-state developer emotionally not connected to this saying, I want to put this in to make money, but to me, as a member of the community, I, I could never do that. And I just, I'm, I'm extremely disappointed we're even considering a second phase, especially after how the first phase was passed and all the conflicts and statute violations that were with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sir Neil Marsette, wishes to address the board?
Uh, Stephen Veal, 575 Johnson Road. I have a very simple question for Mr. Blay. In your report on page two, there is the, uh, paragraph discussing, uh, traffic and the turning lane, et cetera. And, uh, there is a sentence which says, "This analysis includes improvements resulting from seventy total trips in the peak hour for both phases, including striping a centerline turning lane from Fairview Avenue to Park Avenue." Well, since Fairview Avenue is not within a quarter of a mile of Park Avenue, I assume what that is meant to say is a turning, uh, centerline, with a centerline turning lane from, on Court Street extending from Fairview Avenue to Park Avenue. Is that what was intended?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Bobby Marsette, 212 Lake Street, Auburn. I'm actually gonna probably do, uh, a little bit differently. I'm gonna support the project. I'm in the construction industry and I've been on hundreds of these same developments, same buildings, everything. And I can't say how well-done this one is compared to the rest of them. And I drive by the community all the time, from the taste, you know, how well the signs were, to the color scheme, to everything. And also to be blessed to have a local developer doing it, I think is a huge factor. You know, there's a resident who lives right across the street from the development. And if traffic is concerned, it would be concern for someone who had kids going to that school growing up and things like that. I have four children. I'm not concerned by the, I drive, I drive the traffic every day, multiple times a day, my children, my young teenagers do. We navigate through it, I don't, I, I guess that's not a concern for me, but I just want to really just, I think the development of quality homes for people, um, I had people I know that moved in and were related that they found an apartment that was that upscale in this area. So, I just kind of want to speak to that, and then also the jobs it creates, the economy driven by the people coming to it. But it's, it's very tastefully done. Um, I, you know, like I said, I've been on many of these, and, and I just, uh, I'm happy that it looks the way it does for, in, for, in my community.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bezou Gervais. I'm actually a resident of Stable Ridge. I'm also going to give you a little bit of my background. I'm a California real estate broker. My family came from this area several hundred years ago. And I also used to be a senior underwriter for the low-income housing projects in the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development. I hear a lot of subjective statements, I don't hear any facts. What really bothers me is that it's little shots. Nobody has the facts. And as I look through this, I haven't heard anything about the development plan as far as anything other than complaining about water. I can tell you the project that Stable Ridge has put together, American Development, far exceeds anything I've seen in the area. I moved to this area from Bangor and accepted a job based solely on the fact that those apartments weren't even finished in construction. What that is doing is it's pulling income into the area that is badly needed. You look at your mall, that's a joke. When you start diversifying what those businesses are on a mall, you don't have a mall that has lights on, it's pretty much the whole neighborhood. I look at the apartments that are around the corner, where people are parking off of the street by maybe twelve inches on Park Avenue. I see how they have themed the road to match the lighting that is on one side of Park Avenue. And I have a window that actually views the road. And I have a cat that watches that road every morning. I don't see a lot of speeding on that road. What I do see is the people who might be speeding are people who are not following the law. So, maybe what we need to do is get the police out there with radar and take responsibility for law enforcement. As far as your, your statement about, can somebody see the kids where they play? There's a lot of other laws that take place that there has to be reporting through your sheriff's department as to who is going into these areas and who is getting apartments. What I see is a lot of dysfunctional, uh, activity in this area. I see, uh, projects that don't even compare to this. I see a capture of income that Stable Ridge brings to the area. If I was going to buy a car, would I go down to Portland or would I go in the area to shop for it? Would I buy tires in the area, as long as the facilities are here? Instead of abandoning the developments that you have, you should cause the increase of the quality that you have. And by bringing this project in, you're bringing in a high-income group, you're bringing in people that are going to buy needs and services. And as far as the left-hand lane, yes, that takes serial traffic processes out of the way. So that, just like a train, you can divert cars as the cars need to go to a different track, so the remaining cars can go down the same track. I do see some really bad, uh, issues in traffic over on Park Street, and I see a hill that, when I first came down it, uh, when it was snowing, this one, I was like, oh, gosh, I'm going to go skiing. And I didn't even know when the car was going to stop, because it just kept going. So, as far as traffic, that is your least concern. And if you look at the top of the hill, Stable Ridge and go that way towards the school, there's a lot of nice little businesses out there, out to Minot Avenue. There's a lot of nice housing. There's nice housing across the street. Where you have the housing problems in the development are properties that have been scheduled for obsolescence. They've taken their full depreciation. Their rents are enormous compared to what the quality of the properties are. And these are the things you need to really focus on, is how do you enhance the area? Not how do you take shots at one development? Because all you're going to discourage is the next person from coming in. And what you're going to bring in is lower income, subsidized income, and people who really don't care about your city. I don't think you're here serving in this position at night because you don't care about the city. But I do think you really have to take a look at who's complaining, what they know about what they're talking about. Do they know anything about a housing element? Do they know anything about a market study? The traffic flow that comes out of there that is given to you by the state of Maine is based on the number of cars that are going to be in that section and how many will occupy at any certain time.
Mr. Gervais, I apologize, you've exceeded your five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Dunn. I live at 530 Court Street. For over a year now, the citizens of Auburn have been afflicted by some underhanded politics and unethical actions at the hands of city officials and members of all aspects. One result of this was a very abrupt proposal and passing of the T-4.2 zoning ordinance, followed by the immediate approval of Stable Ridge Apartments. This type of construction is unprecedented, unprecedented in a most, mostly single-family residential neighborhood. And the citizens of Auburn were strongly opposed and presented a petition to repeal that ordinance and bring it to referendum. We know that some more political games ensued that silenced the will of the people as the ordinance was repealed, but quickly replaced by the current T-4.2B that changed little to nothing of that original ordinance. During the same time, the approval process for Stable Ridge, um, was ongoing. The developer's spokesperson advocated for multifamily units, stating that those who would live there deserved to live in a neighborhood. I agree. But living in a neighborhood comes with an expectation of being respectful of the neighbors who live there. The American Development Group, during the development, uh, construction of Stable Ridge has not shown much respect for the neighbors. Here are some examples. The demolition process, um, which demolished a hundred years or more of history, began with the fire department using the buildings on-site for training purposes. None of the neighbors were notified of this and were quite alarmed the first day that all of those vehicles showed up and chainsaws ensued on the, on the rooftops. Blasting. Some neighbors in our surrounding area were contacted about blasting, but we all know that we could feel it beyond and have not been asked to be part of that blasting criteria. Also, no schedule of the blasting was ever posted for neighbors to know which day, when, even told, oh, the blasting is done, and then it continued, and we've heard that it started again recently this week. Noise. Construction violated the noise ordinance multiple times, starting earlier than seven AM on many occasions, including weekends. Blasting, banging dump trucks, constant beeping of backing-up vehicles disturbed us day and well into the night, especially in the summer. Debris. We're still dealing with that. Trash from the site blew all over the neighborhood as the construction containers were often overflowing and uncovered. Residents in the area were constantly cleaning up their yards. No fence was put around to collect trash or even to secure the construction site. Safety. There was obstruction of travel of cars and pedestrians. The sidewalk was closed for a time with little notice to pedestrians who then had to walk in the street to get by the construction area. Construction vehicles parked for days on the sidewalk, which forced students to walk in the street on their way home. The road was minimized to one lane for a time. There was not much warning and no opportunity for cars to detour. Once they got to the site, there was no way to turn around. We know that backed up on, backed up traffic on Court Street only exacerbates the existing traffic issues. Light pollution. There is considerable light migrating from the site, even though we were told originally there wouldn't be. The kublas are lit up. Many bright light posts were installed along the roadway that lit up the area like an airport runway. Thankfully, the developer is working with us to improve that situation. Privacy invasion. Drones have been flying overhead to capture images for Stable Ridge marketing. They have flown close to homes, close enough that you could almost reach up and touch them. This is certainly unacceptable. The pump station. We were told originally that the pump station would be the responsibility of the developer. We now know that that is not the case, so that my rate, ratepayer dollars are now going to be used to maintain a private pump station. It's likely at some point that my water bill and everyone else's is going to increase in order to assume those costs. I should not have to pay for a private pump station? Is the city now going to pay for my pump in my house so that I can have the appropriate pressure? Are they going to inspect and maintain and replace? Probably not, but I will ask. Traffic. A year ago, I stood here. It was my very first concern. I was even asked if I was really that concerned about traffic on the street. And yes, in fact, I still am. Three lanes on that street only puts traffic closer to the pedestrians on the sidewalks. Not to mention that there are several people on the street that have trouble with turning. No one cared before now. It is unfortunate. This plan does not address all of our problems. I am opposed to more buildings because of traffic on the street.
I apologize, you've exceeded your five minutes.
I really think we need to reconsider the future of this development.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jeffrey Hyman, I live at thirty-four Vista Drive. I'm a director of order to the law in question. I have a handout, uh, materials for the members of the planning board, uh, that has the sections of the code that I'm going to cite. They appear before you tonight because the plan as submitted does not meet the requirements of the T-4.2B zoning ordinance. As the members of the planning board know, Section sixty thirteen zero four and the Maine Municipal Association Guidance at pages thirty-two and thirty-nine lays out the duty of the planning board in this review. The applicant has a burden of proof. The applicant must provide sufficient evidence in the record to support your decision. In making that decision, the applicant has to provide proof that every requirement of every applicable statute and ordinance has been met. Not some, not many, all. When you make this decision, you're going to have to provide a findings of fact and conclusion of law. In the packet prepared by the planning office, they propose what that should be. There, however, T-4.2B has not been conformed to in respect to the front setback requirements. I understand that in the packet, there's substantial evidence, uh, that they are not complying with this in that the measurements for the setbacks, front setbacks for these five new buildings is taken from the sidewalk adjacent to the private drives and private parking lots in this lot. Now, I understand that the applicant may have relied on interpretations from the planning office. The planning office, however, has no legal authority to interpret any statute or any ordinance to have a meaning other than what a plain reading of that statute or ordinance would say. In this case, they have said that they can measure, in my discussions with the planning office, can measure from these sidewalks. Let's turn to the ordinances themselves. At 60-2, this is a Form-based code, and in 60-2, Form-based codes are defined. And they're defined as a development regulation that fosters predictable build results in a high-quality public realm. The term "public realm" is further defined. It means the physical and social domain of the public that is held in common, either by their physical presence or visual association. And includes a number of things, including streets. A private realm, which is the opposite piece of the public realm, is also defined at 60-2. It means the public and social domain that's considered private by their physical location and visual separation from the public realm. This is considered the area behind the front building facades and the side and rear yards. It's important to understand that the word "street" is also defined in this, and you can read through the definition yourself, but for the purposes here, it's an accepted street and it's Court Street. Road is also defined, and you'll find no place in 4.2B is road mentioned. But road is defined in the ordinances as a public or private way. Further on, at 60-546, Form-based codes are defined. And it talks about a predictable building development pattern based on the physical form and its relationship to the public and private realm. Again, defined terms. Let's talk about the actual T-4.2B. The ordinance has not been conformed and published, but I have had two members of the planning department tell me that the minutes from the November 7th city council meeting, the red-line version is what was used, and I would agree with that, was what was used to review this application. If you look at the staff papers from 8/3/2022 that were provided with this, it goes on to talk about Form-based codes. And again, it talks about it being a regulation, and it talks about it having, promoting walkability and the separation between public and private realms. It talks about traditional neighborhood development district, which this ordinance is. And it talks about minimum-maximum setbacks to form a moderately dense street wall pattern. And it goes on to talk about the maximum setback of 25 feet and the average depth from lots on each side. The actual published, excuse me, the actual passed ordinance by the city council at 6548B has illustrative views, and all buildings shown in that are directly adjacent to the public realm. It goes on to describe characteristic features in this ordinance. And it talks about more public and private realm interaction and frontage fences. Frontage fences is a...
I apologize, Mr. Harmon, you've exceeded your five minutes.
Sorry, you'll have the materials, and I would say that you can't make a finding of fact, a conclusion of law in...
Mr. Harmon, I understand, but you've exceeded your five minutes, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
So, I think Mr. Harmon raised the most substantial questions in terms of those metrics that the planning board is required to adhere to. So, can staff speak to how road setback was determined, defined, where those definitions can be found, so on and so forth?
So the staff determined the setback from the travel way or access ways under the definition that was edited back in November and then earlier in August as well. So that's how we determine the setback requirements for the access ways.
For the planning board's purpose, are you able to point us to that definition so that we can...
Yeah, I believe Catherine's getting it.
Yep, I'm bringing up the city council info sheet from November 7th, and I'm just trying to find where that is.
This is the illustration that was approved, access ways and parking lots, typical. So that's where the, essentially, the setbacks were established from that.
And by definition, roads, including what Mr. Harmon provided, a road means any public or private traveled way or any portion thereof.
So you're utilizing a definition found in the ordinance of road, which includes private and public ways and access ways?
As well as the ability to use the access ways and parking that was adopted as part of the T-4.2B district. I think my point is that roads can be public or private. I think T-4.2B goes beyond that to allow for access ways and parking to also be used for that access.
Does the ordinance in T-4.2 reference a front setback from... Mr. Harmon utilized a different term that has a different definition. Mr. Harmon utilized the term "street." Staff has utilized the term "road." Is frontage defined with reference to "street" or "road" in the Form-based code?
The front setback here, the graphic showing how we measure those setbacks, allows for that to be from a street, road, or access ways or parking.
Okay, I just asked for clarification. For instance, in other parts of the ordinance, we see terms like "road frontage," so we'll specifically utilize the word. I don't remember the word "street" or "road" being utilized in the frontage description of Form-based code, so I was just seeking clarification from staff. I believe it's referenced as "frontage." And I raised the question because Mr. Harmon does bring up an important point. He utilizes a specific term, and if that specific term is utilized, then it does have a specific definition.
I think we've gotta go back to, go back up, Catherine. It's the placement of the building and its relationship to the access way.
Right, I guess, I'm trying to create clear, okay. I'm trying to ask a question that I already know the answer to, and I'll stop dancing around it. Mr. Harmon brought up an incredibly important point, which is that "street" has a specific definition. And if we are to utilize frontage along a street, we must utilize "street" as defined by "street." And if we utilize frontage along a road, then we must utilize "road" as defined in ordinance. However, our Form-based code does not utilize "road" or "street." So, I apologize for trying to...
It's building.
Put you around in a corner. I guess the idea is, I didn't want the answer to come from me, but it's clearly here in the ordinance in front of me that neither "road" nor "street" is referenced. So, it simply becomes "frontage," at which point, I guess, one could have an argument as to whether or not that should be "street frontage" or "road frontage," given that "street" and "road" are defined differently within our ordinance. But since that term is not utilized here, I would find it difficult to hang my hat on one definition or another, I guess is where I'm going with that. So I apologize for asking a question that I knew the answer to and trying to put you in that spot, but I'm just trying to make that point. There were some other questions that were raised. Specifically, Mr. Smith raised a question with regard to when materials were posted. So that's a simple question, that's an easy question, when were they posted?
I know there was an issue from the... We added some materials not for this project on Friday, and we lost some of the links over the weekend that we corrected yesterday. But most of the materials, I don't know if you can speak to the date, but they were posted at the time of the posting of the public notice, 12 to 14 days prior to tonight.
More were posted, additional ones were posted from Stable Ridge recently, like, I think just a few days ago, because we saw that that the, not the entire packet was originally posted, so we just corrected that and added all of those on. We posted initially, initially, a chunk of them, but added the complete ones afterwards, and I don't know the exact date.
So additional information was added after that five days?
We had two, yeah, we had two separate submittals responding to staff concerns, and there were additional materials added on Friday that broke some of the links.
Okay, thank you for that. Planning board rules clearly allow the planning board to accept those materials, however, it will require that a member of the board make a motion to accept those for consideration prior to any motion to move forward at the end. So that's, I think, I'm glad that that issue was raised, however, that's clearly referenced within our policies.
And we had them for longer. They were just not posted to the website. They've been available for public inspection since before that, when we received.
Okay, so, well, that's a good question. It doesn't say they need to be posted on the website. When were they made, when were they made available to the public, because that's what it references?
What's the date of that second submittal in the folder for Stable Ridge?
Let's see.
The applicant might be able to speak to it too, but we have that. February 2nd is the date of the second submittal.
And that was, those materials were available to the public in the planning office?
At City Hall, yes.
So then, just to back up, Evan, you're saying a motion is probably not needed then, correct?
If they were made available to the public, then no, a motion is not needed.
Okay, just wanted to tie a bow on it.
As I recall, and I will reference as we're talking, I believe it says, perhaps staff could correct me if I'm wrong, that these materials need to be made available to the public, but I don't believe that our specific policy states that they be published on the website by a specific date. So, there were additional questions. I'm gonna step back. Oftentimes, I ask these questions of staff, but since this question is asked, and I think I have a fair certainty of the answer to this question, I would like to take a moment and review our policies. So, planning board members can continue asking questions that were raised by the public. I'm going to review those. Obviously, I'll still be listening, but I'd like to make sure I have a better answer to your question.
Where's our closest public bus stop, and would there be one added close to this nearby? I'm gonna try to find it on the, I don't know, I'll try to find it.
And then also, one thing, we talked about the crosswalk going across the street. Would we be able to raise that as a raised table crosswalk to have traffic slow down?
So I think we can consider that through the design process, but what we're hearing back from the engineers in transportation is maybe that's not the right fix according to the engineers and that the raised island is better. But we could consider either-or based on the advice of the engineers that will do the final stamp design for construction.
I had a question about the point Mr. Smith raised about the, what commercial window coverage versus residential? And how, these are being defined as residential buildings?
Yeah, they're multifamily residential buildings under our ordinance. I know the financing banks will consider five or more units to be commercial. There's a higher risk and there's less likelihood of owner occupancy. But our ordinance defines multifamily housing as multifamily housing and doesn't change it to commercial at five units. Sorry, multifamily dwelling is the term that we use in the ordinance definition.
And also regards to the T-4.2, looking at it, it's not in definitions, but in the, some of the illustrations used to illustrate setback, the word "streets" used in the illustration, I don't know how legally binding that is binding.
I also had a question, well, they had a question about the turning lane, if that is DOT or if that is city.
So DOT will have, you know, some input on the development for sure. So, they're gonna be consulted in the improvements. All the improvements that are gonna be made along Court Streets, not just necessarily this project, but there's other improvements that they're gonna consider.
I think you had mentioned that that turning would go past AMS as well?
That's correct, yep.
In this phase or like future?
Uh, no, it's all planned for one contract that will address all the issues along Court Street.
And when is that contract up for review?
So, I just got a text from our transportation director, and at the end of this month, it's gonna be for review.
With an ETA for a decision of what?
They'll be, so they have what's called a scoping meeting, so we go over the fine details of what the engineers are laying out in the preliminary review. And then the design engineers finalize the packet, and, you know, at that point, DOT will give their approval. They may have some specific suggestions on exactly the final design, but for the most part, what they're proposing has been schematically discussed with DOT, but the final design hasn't been completed yet.
Could they decline the final design? Could they decline all, both left-lane turns?
It's highly unlikely that they're gonna decline, you know, another traffic engineer's design on their stamp. And, you know, there was a pretty thorough report that supports the information that they're suggesting. In addition to that, you know, they understand what some of the challenges are along the Court Street corridor. So they're, I think they're very supportive of, you know, pedestrian safety, traffic safety. These are essentially safety projects, and it's really a part of a big effort to, you know, calm traffic down along this corridor, so.
There is a lot of conversation about the pumping station costing $15,000. And is that taxpayers paying?
So that, yeah, that $15,000 is, that's distributed throughout all the ratepayers in the city. You know, so that fee is essentially taken up in that in all of the ratepayers, not necessarily the taxpayers, but the ratepayers. So those are the ones that are currently getting public water supply in the city of Auburn. So if you're on a well, that doesn't necessarily affect you. But if you're a ratepayer, I mean, you're getting public water, then it could affect the rate. But $15,000 a year, it's not gonna amount to much. It's probably gonna be in the cents or a dollar. But it's not, it's not a tremendous amount.
We have discussed that with the Auburn Water District. Phase one at 60... Um, Phase One at sixty units, um, either cover, they, they're also ratepayers, so they're paying into that system. Um, I don't remember the exact number, but Phase One generated around the same amount of money that they anticipated for costs. Um, Phase Two, with more ratepayers, generated more revenue than what they anticipated for, for costs associated with the pump station, so, um, just keep in mind that, you know, these new units are also ratepayers, so that, that cost is not entirely borne, um, by the existing ratepayers. And I think in Phase Two, the project is generating more revenue than, than the cost of, of that.
And that's exactly the reason why the PUC, uh, favored with the developer in this particular case. Um, they, they do a rate analysis, and if it doesn't affect the, um, necessarily the, um, the, the ratepayers, except, uh, at an accessible amount, then it, then it falls on the ratepayers as a, as a, um, essentially a public improvement.
There were also talk about like statue violations, I'm not really sure, but, and also maybe just have them be a little bit more aware of the children, like, walking home from school and going to school with having like big trucks in the way of, so the kids don't have to walk in the street. I just, you know, it's just a couple hours out of the day. I just feel like that's something that's pretty important for them not to be walking in the street, for sure. Especially in the winter.
Yeah, so, they did, they did, in Phase One, they did some tie-ins on, on, in Court Street. So, um, Phase Two, we're not anticipating any of those tie-ins. I think I personally got involved in that one, um, where they had some tie-ins and they were really, uh, making it, uh, potentially an issue in the public way. And we were pretty rela- relatively stern with the, with the developer at that point, with, uh, with some emails and some conversations that, you know, we really gotta make sure that, you know, we're thinking about the safety of the public. Um, fortunately, I think that all of those tie-ins are completed, so we're not gonna necessarily have that same situation again. Um, so I don't expect the, the amount of traffic that was in the Court Street corridor in the right of way to be there during this phase.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to the notice and public inspection of documents when you're ready for that.
Excellent, I have the planning board materials ready as well. Would you go for it?
Yeah, I don't think you'll find a specific requirement anywhere in our ordinance for posting to the website. We try to do that as a way to reduce foot trap and traffic and make it more convenient for people to find the materials. Um, we have to give public notice of a public proceeding, which this is, um, and we have to do that at least twelve days before the hearing. Uh, we do twelve and seven, um, under our ordinance, which I think is consistent with the state or exceeds the state standard. We've had the materials available for public inspection, which we have to do, uh, during that timeframe. Um, anybody could request to view them or copy them. Um, but again, we try to put them on the website as a practical matter because that tool's available and it's convenient for city staff and for members of the public to access them.
Right, because I don't remember any of that in ordinance. I assume Mr. Smith was referencing planning board policy and procedure. Article five, section C, additional applicant revisions or communications to the board must be submitted to the planning board, uh, to the planning development staff no later than the end of the day Wednesday before the planning board meeting. D, same article, the board may nonetheless, in accordance with state and local law and its own discretion, consider an application, petition, or amendment now that fails to meet sections A through C, that is, to be complete if the board finds initially that failure to satisfy this article is justified due to excusable error or neglect. Additionally, under Article eight, section D, we find that the planning office shall post all available application materials on the city website by Friday prior to the public hearing. An additional, an addition notice may be sent by request from identified community and neighborhood groups, city councils, or other interested citizens or public agencies that might be interested or affected. Um, and also, under Article eight, section F, um, all the information, plans, reports, and the like that may be presented or used at the public hearing shall be presented to the planning office no later than the end of day Wednesday before the planning board meeting and shall be made available to the public by the close of business on the Friday preceding the hearing. The objective is to provide time for the staff, the board, and the public to have a reasonable time period to review and analyze all the materials. So my question is, when did, if it, it needs to be made available and need to have gone on the website by Friday? So, um, if it did not go on the website by Friday, I read a section that clearly authorizes us to say that we can choose to move forward, but we have to make a specific decision to do so.
We had the initial application and the updates, um, the plans on the website, um, well ahead of that. Um, Friday, we do know that when we added some additional materials, um, that it appears that the links broke, and we fixed them first thing Monday morning. We were not made aware that they were broken, um, but we realized it when we were trying to use them Monday morning.
Okay, but an attempt was made to do so, and good faith effort, and, okay.
Was the materials that the links were providing to available at the City Hall?
Yeah, the initial applications had been available for over thirty days, and then the supplemental materials were available as of, I believe it was February 2nd, was the supplemental materials, but those were available from February 2nd on.
Seems clear to me.
Is there anyone on the board that feels that there's evidence that the materials were not provided in accordance with the planning board policies and procedures? Okay, so I just wanna make sure that we're clear there. Mr. Mr. Bergeron, did you have something you wanted to say?
When you said, when you were saying that could be, uh, an error, like, would that posting the link and the link breaking be that error? That you, when you mentioned us, can you reread that, like, the last paragraph you read?
The-
In the planning board procedures?
The last one I read, or the one about the board accepting something that's changed?
Except the one that's accepting something that's changed.
That is Article five, section C. Additional applicant revisions or communications to the board must be, oh, no, exceptions. So we're looking at Article five, section D, exceptions. The board may nonetheless, in accordance with state and local law and its own discretion, consider an application, petition, or amendment that fails to meet sections A through C, that is, fails to meet that timeline. If the board finds initially that failure to satisfy this article, article was justified or due to excusable error or neglect. And I would think that the website going down would be an excusable error.
Exactly what I was, like, looking for.
But I, I don't think that the website being down constitutes a failure to provide those plans to staff, though. We received those on the 2nd of February.
Um, I, I do have, uh, an additional question, uh, that kind of was sparked in my mind based on Mr. Smith's comments. These are residential units, but it is a commercial development. Wh- 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 what about screening? I guess that was really the only thing I didn't see. Um, we had screening in Phase One for the frontage and the side, and that was something that we talked about during Phase One. Uh, and I remember we talked about it sort of at length. In fact, we talked about the video that was presented and whether or not that constituted screening. Um, and if we look at Phase One, we see that screening's actually already been planted, which was really, really great considering the timeline they were working on, but we see those evergreens that are being planted in accordance with our screening, uh, requirements. Um, I just didn't specifically see those, that screening on Phase Two.
They've, they've carried a similar theme for vegetation and screening through Phase Two. Um, we have this landscaping plan, and we also have sort of a video fly-through similar to the one that you looked at as part of Phase One. If you wanna see that to visualize the, the plantings and, uh, sort of their mature state, uh, after they've been there a while.
Actually, if you could go back to your pre- and just sort of explain for me, um, I'm looking at the lower portion, I'm seeing deciduous trees. Uh, along the upper, sort of northern, in front of those buildings, I'm seeing deciduous trees and what looks like to be evergreen shrubs, yes? Where your, where your cursor is right now?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, um, what are the black circles, well, to the south, to the southerly part?
You have to go-
You've got your cursor on one right now, but there are also some in the southerly part.
This one, right?
Well, you've gotta, you've gotta go on the key and look at what that is.
Uh, I, my question is, is that a planting? Is that a sp- is that a planting? Is that a deciduous planting? Is that a, a conifer? Is that, what is that?
I don't, y- you'd have to go back to the landscaping plan. They're specifically called out in, in the types of plans.
Would, would Mike know off the top of his head, were tho- are those evergreens, do you know? Okay, those are evergreens. The black dots are evergreens, okay.
If they were not, would it make a difference?
What?
If there was something else, like not evergreens, would it make a difference?
Yes, because we require evergreens for screening because they're meant to be-
Okay, would Mike know that, right?
What?
Mike would know that, right, that-
Right, but that's the idea, they're meant to be screening.
Just don't wanna challenge, like, you know, it sounds like Mike knows that evergreens are needed. They are evergreens, so, just, yeah.
Nope, I'm not trying to challenge anything. I'm saying it's a discussion that we had in Phase One, and it hadn't been discussed yet. Um, the concept of sightlines has been brought up. Um, the idea of the way that the project looks from the road has been brought up. Um, we specifically discussed the need for, um, screening on a commercial development, Mr. Smith brought up rightly so, that this is a commercial development, and we just hadn't discussed screening yet, so I wanted to make sure that we, that, that it was covered. Are there any other plans? I mean, nah, yeah, any other questions? It's already a long night. Are there any other questions?
The only other, and I, I heard a comment about trash and, and sort of everything that was, the, the construction debris and, and I don't know what, do we require, um, you know, anything with regard to coverage or pickup or, um, frequency of disposals being taken care of so that, or, or fences of any kind to keep trash from leaving the construction site?
So they typically have, uh, cons- they, they do have, um, construction dumpsters on the site, and they should be being, they should be emptied periodically throughout the, the project. Typically, it's every couple, every couple weeks, but in during, you know, high volume times, there could be times where they need it more often, or it could be monthly, and sometimes they, it could be, you know, uh, bi-weekly. But there's no, there's no, um, necessarily written out timeframe, you know, when the trash needs to be picked up.
So it looks like the planting, this, the plan you were looking at is sheet eight, um, when you had the black dots on the screen. Sheet seven has the details, and those black dots are eastern white pine trees.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a construction fence that would go around the area just to try and keep any debris from going out?
There's, um, there's silt fence, but that's not necessarily a construction fence. Um, silt fence is more for erosion and sediment control. Um, there isn't, there is a permanent fence that is suggested along the, the, the high ridge on the back end. Um, but, um, the sequence of that, um, I, I defer to the consultant in terms of when they would install that. And, and about the safety fence, I would defer to the consultant as well.
So it sounds like it's left up to the developer to pick up the trash when he or she cares to.
That's correct.
Other questions? Alright, seeing no more questions, um, I would seek a motion at this time.
I have some comments.
Okay.
In particular, um, and I, it's hard to hear and record everybody's names, so the, the two gentlemen that spoke about the economics of the project, um, I, I couldn't agree more with the need for different price points in, um, properties a- around the city. And, uh, likewise, with diversifying the income, I, I think it's great for different neighborhoods, uh, neighborhoods to have a diversity of income levels. Um, it, it, it just brings the communities together and, um, makes things a lot more stable.
Having said that, in order to move forward, we must seek a motion, or I will declare that we, there is no motion, no action is being taken. So at this time, does anyone wish to make a motion? Better do it, you've got ten seconds.
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve the site plan for the construction of the sixty-unit multifamily housing project consisting of building five, sixteen thousand square foot, three-story buildings with ninety parking spaces that exceeds the parking requirements of seventy-five spaces. This project meets the requirements of section sixty dash one-two-seven-seven, and further that the application meets the requirements of site plan ordinance, section sixty dash four-five, section sixty dot five-point-nine, section sixty dash five-five-four of multifamily permitted uses under Division fourteen, T four-point-two of the Form Based Code with the following conditions.
Yes, what are, what are the conditions?
Okay. A, no development activity in any bonding or inspection fees is determined as determined by the Auburn Engineering Department. B, the applicant complies with AWSD letter dated January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, in lieu fee of, for off-site improvements related to transportation of thirty-seven thousand eight-hundred-nine dollars and thirty cents to be paid upon the certificate of occupancy for the first constructed building in Phase Two. And D, sheet number six, level lip spreader on perimeter drain outlets, adjusting CB number four to uphill side of tip-down.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second has been made. Discussion on the motion, debate? I will say that, um, this is a project that I think provides a very specific need. I'm disappointed that it is not a mixed, uh, development in accordance with the character of the neighborhood that surrounds it, I guess. It, it makes sense to have multi-units of the road. We have lots of those along Court Street, but having said that, any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion? One, two, three. All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. Motion fails, five-two. The next item on our agenda is item four, public hearing subdivision review. We've been at this long, how many does, I'm gonna call a three-minute recess, actually. Um, I need to use the restroom, so, I'm still in the chair, I'm doing it, three minutes. And the next item on our agenda is item number four, public hearing subdivision review. Uh, Matthew Violet is provi- is proposing to divide a parcel at one eighteen Gamage Avenue. Parcel ID two, five, zero, dash, zero, six, zero to create three residential building lots, this item is pursuant to article sixteen, division four subdivision and article four, division fourteen form-based code. Uh, we'll proceed with this public hearing as we did with the last.
I have, I just wanna have complete transparency, I was the listing agent on this property, so I didn't know the buyer, but I did sell this house, I think in two thousand twenty-one. Um, so I just wanna say that, and I also, like, so I have zero monetary interest at this point. It wasn't contingent on being built into different lots and I was not on the planning board.
So, so, uh, to be clear, uh, you're disclosing that you were the seller's agent. Um, the lot sold in two thousand and twenty-one, I heard, um. Sale of the lot was not contingent upon, um, ability to subdivide and there was not discussion of subdivision. And after the closing of that property, uh, you have no, uh, current fiduciary interest in the property and you had none after that?
None, and I don't know Matt Violet.
Okay, um, I think that, uh, rises to, um, the possibility of, um, I I think, given the timeframe, I I don't even think it's perceived conflict of interest, but I think it's in our best interest to, as a board, invoke our policies and procedures, um, and determine whether we think, um, Tony can continue, so. Um, to that end, we need to do that collectively as a board, as a chair, I'm going to ask, call for a vote. Having heard the information, how many people feel that, uh, Mrs. Ferraro can continue?
Miss.
Miss Ferraro can, can, I apologize. I realize I called you Tony and then I should be more formal, so, how many, so. Who feels Ms. Ferraro should be allowed to continue on this item because they believe she would not be biased based on the information that has been presented? Okay. That is all members of the, all voting members of the board, I assume Ms. Ferraro abstained because the vote was about herself, okay. Well, we have, we've, according to our policies and procedures, uh, Ms. Ferraro will be allowed to continue as a full acting member. On this topic, so, having said that, is staff ready to present their report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, um, this project is a minor subdivision, um. Matthew Violet is proposing to divide the parcel at one eighteen Gamage Ave, parcel ID two fifty dash zero sixty to create three residential building lots, this item is pursuant to chapter sixty, article, um, sixteen, division four, sub, um, subdivision and article four, division fourteen, form-based code. Um, this lot is in form-based code T dash four point two B. Um, there is an existing house on the lot and the proposed subdivision is to divide up, is to, um, split off um, the both sides of the house, so the house kind of stands in the middle, the existing one, to create three residential lots total, um, with one of them existing with a house. Um, the lot will be accessed through two existing curb cuts on Gamage Ave, these curb cuts may need to be expanded to accommodate the driveways. Um, lot one and two will share a common driveway, access utility, maintenance and repair easement. Lot three will have a sufficient curb cut for a second driveway without an easement. So, for some background for this project and, um, to kind of go over the requirements for subdivisions here. Section sixty dash thirteen sixty-seven requires that subdivisions shall designate um, one acre of land for recreation and open space for the ter- for the first ten subdivided lots. Or, or, um, uh, fulfill a a contribution or, um, a a fee in lieu of this, of this, um, of this requirement to designate one lot if the location or other factors make it so that it's not feasible. Um, this is an in-town lot on Gamage Ave, it has point three, three acres and it wouldn't be feasible because of that to require, um, that open space as part of the subdivision approval just because it's, it isn't a lot of, it isn't ten different lots and, um, there isn't an acre of land even on that lot, so, um. In this case, um, an in-lie fee amount in cash equivalent to the land value of what would otherwise be designated as open space or recreation, um, might be required. Or the plan, and the planning board can decide to, uh, to either waive that or keep that, that fee. Um, the fee would be put toward improving recreation for the folks living in that subdivision um, by enhancing pedestrian access to Pettingill Park, um, Ingersoll Arena and the Senior Community Center. The, the lot that's in question is very close to, um, Pettingill Park, it's, um. Oh, gosh. I have a, how far away it is in here, um, but it is very close and the table below, the table here that I'm referencing, um, shows the land value of parcels of, um, in the same zone and neighborhood that are about an acre and determines their value per acre to decide what would be the value equivalent, um, that each lot would contribute to that, um, setting aside one lot for recreation, so. Um, the value per acre is then divided by ten to determine the equivalent value per unit. So, um, we can see what I did here is we took, we looked at the, the neighborhood, so we looked at the same, um, we looked at, um, comparable lots in that same zone and the same neighborhood to determine what their value was. Um, we looked at their acreage, divided it by, uh, divided that acreage to get the value per acre. And then at the end, we averaged out those values and then divided that by ten to determine what would each unit, um, what would each unit be contributing to that recreational space. So, um, in this case, the planning board, and what we came out here, um, what we came out with here was three thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars per unit for recreational value um, or for a recreational in lieu, um, contribution fee. Um, the planning board has the option of requiring a payment of that, that amount for each subdivided lot, um, to contribute to neighborhood recreational improvement. Um, but because the first split of the lot, um, of the lot would not be considered a subdivision, it, that would, that first split would only create those two lots. Um, staff is suggesting that, um, that the planning board require a payment reflecting the recreation land value of only the third lot, which would be a total of three thousand nine, uh, two hundred ninety-two dollars for one unit. Um, and so we suggest moving forward that the planning board consider that in lieu fee, whether or not it makes sense, whether or not you want to require it or waive it or do something else. And we provided two motions that you could, that you can choose from to reflect both of those options. Um, all comments made in the department review were met, so we have no outlying comments. They were really just that the lots would require different utility services. And, um, we asked for an updated curb cut plan and they were, they provided that too. And we also touched on the fact that a stormwater connection agreement would need to be signed, um, for those new lots. And, um, our, our findings of fact for the suggested findings of fact for the planning board are that the proposal meets the subdivision guidelines pursuant to section sixty dash thirteen fifty-nine, um, numbers one through fifteen. Section sixty dash thirteen sixty-seven, um, A requires that subdivision proposals include provisions for recreation and open space to meet the foreseeable needs of the residents. And, um, there's an option to do that in lieu fee, but also the parcel is within six hundred feet of Pettingill Park, so there is existing recreation within walking distance and there are existing sidewalks in that neighborhood too. Um, the subdivision plan conforms with the comprehensive plan pursuant to section sixty dash thirteen sixty-five, number one. Um, the subdivision plan does not interfere with, uh, with the preservation of natural features, uh, pursuant to section sixty dash thirteen sixty-seven, number two. And, um, the lot meets all dimensional setback requirements and access standards um, pursuant to section sixty dash thirteen sixty-three, number three. And finally, the subdivision proposal will constitute suitable development and will not present a detriment to the neighborhood or environment. Um, pursuant to section sixty dash thirteen oh four, number one. And um, that's all I have for that and we can, we can follow up and I'm happy to answer questions, or, we also have the applicant and the applicant's agent here today too.
Any questions?
I have a question, uh. Are we able in to assign the fee in lieu of to specific projects that are proximate to the the development or the subdivision, or is it just go to a pool that feeds all of the projects that are going on?
I think, um, you can certainly make that recommendation, um, we do have to go through the Parks and Rec Committee to allocate it. Um, in this case, um, there's really, you know, we have a third of an acre total lot size, it's an air- area where we want to encourage housing in town where utilities available, um, and we already have a plan for enhanced crosswalks. Um, so I think we we can be successful in convincing the council and Parks and Rec Board to assign it that way to give these people access to the substantial investment we make in recreation in that park.
Yeah, I guess just in general, though, if a fee in lieu would just go to a general fund that gets, gets determined by the park department where it goes to?
You and the developer can kind of negotiate where that goes to, uh, if you want to, but ultimately the council would be the one that decides where to spend it based on your feedback and the Parks and Rec Board.
Other questions?
Quick, clarif- quick clarifying question, all three lots, as I read, just to make sure, already All three lots, as I read, just to make sure, already have municipal water and sewer hookups?
Yep, water and sewer is available on the three lots.
And the two curb cutouts that need to be expanded for driveways, the cost is being assumed by the property owner?
Yes, that's.
The, the curb cuts themselves are not changing. So the existing curb cuts that are there will remain there. There's one that's, that's 30 feet and then there's another one that's 20 feet. It's on the plan. But the expansion of the driveway certainly is part of the developer or the lot owner. They'll probably sell them as individual lots. I don't know what the plan is if they're going to develop the lot or not, but certainly that whoever develops that lot will be responsible for, um, you know, expanding that driveway.
All right, thank you very much.
Uh, my question is essentially, what's the average frontage on these three lots going to be if they're split? What are the three frontages?
Let's see. So it looks like 42, um, 42 feet and 8 inches on the lot that is also on, I think that's Davis. And then the middle lot is 56 feet, 3 inches, and we have, let me see what that says.
66, okay.
Okay, thank you guys.
Yep, so all sort of average for that neighborhood, okay. Any other questions?
I.
I live in that neighborhood. So I know what the average is.
I see him every afternoon. Isn't it really 600 feet to Pettingill Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see.
So, uh, any other questions though for staff? Any other questions? No questions. Applicant or their agent?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present. I'm Jim Corbin with Teradyne Consultants and I'm here with the applicant and owner, Matthew Violet. Catherine did a great job summarizing our application, just to get to the point on a few things. Catherine, do you mind bringing up? I gave her a plan that was colored today, just to, for easy talking points. Based on feedback from staff, we were able to make a few modifications to the original plan to address a couple of the concerns, one of them being the curb cuts. So we've stipulated on the plans that the actual curb cuts that exist right now, the two curb cuts, they don't need to be expanded. There needs to be some room made for the driveways though. So we've created a common driveway, access easements, shown here in green. So that the, the, uh, the residents of, let's say, Lot 3 here on the bottom can utilize a bit of Lot 2's driveway to access their lot. And the same between Lots 1 and 2. So that all access is going to be from the existing curb cuts. Nothing's changing there. Additionally, there is a bit of existing city sidewalk within the, um, the, the existing lot, the greater parcel. So you'll see a blue strip coming down. That's a three-foot wide strip to accommodate the existing sidewalk and to allow for any improvements to the sidewalk if needed. So we, we have these three lots here. All 3,600 square feet in size or larger. There is the existing dwelling on the middle lot, which will remain as it currently is. I also added some, um, suggested language for conditions of approval with regards to maintaining the subdivision and for any future development within the subdivision. So, condition 1 is the city's standard note. Condition 2 being shared driveway maintenance and use agreements between Slots 1 and 2 and Lots 3, 2 and 3 shall be recorded at the Andrews Cogan Registered Deeds prior to issuance of the building permit. The deeds to the lots within this subdivision shall reference the driveway maintenance agreement and will of course reference the plan. The existing curb cuts shall not be wide beyond their existing width as dimensioned, and I dimensioned them on the plan. Some pumps, uh, condition 4, some pumps and perimeter drainage structures to service any proposed building shall tie into the existing storm drainage system located within the public way. See Auburn Public Works Department Storm Water Drainage Connection Agreement form for more information. All lots will require separate water and sewer service connections. Municipal water connection fees and sewer capacity fees may apply. Again, these are suggested. A lot of it's echoing already what requirements are. But for convenience are on the plan too, in case there are any questions.
This plan is not the plan in front of us with these conditions.
This one is new from today.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, the lot arrangements are the same.
The lot arrangements are the same. This is just a slightly updated plan with color and.
So, so what, so what's been updated is that you're highlighting, you colored where the easements are.
Exactly.
But what I want to know is where the conditions came from.
Those came from me, not from the board. These are suggested based on feedback from, from city staff.
So.
And again, these aren't conditions specifically suggested by staff, but based on comments from staff, I knew that they would be questioned by the staff or the board this evening. So I wanted to preemptively address those.
Okay, so to be clear, because I want to make sure I know what I'm looking at. I'm looking at a site plan. The dimensions on this site plan are the same as the site plan this gentleman is using to present. The difference is that I can see where those easements are here. He's chosen to color them. Additionally, as part of his discussion with the board, he's proposing specific conditions that he believes would meet concerns that staff has shared. Okay. Okay.
Just to correct, it's a subdivision plan, not a site plan?
I apologize. Yeah, you're correct.
Was that a bit much, Mr. Chairman?
What?
Was that a bit much?
No.
Okay.
It was procedurally confusing because we are being shown a site plan here that is not actually the site plan we are voting on.
Yes.
And we are not being asked to vote on this. We are being asked to vote on this. I understand why you're using this because you're helping us see, which is why I'm trying to clarify whether the dimensions are the same or if you are asking us to functionally approve something else other than what's in front of us.
No, sir.
Okay.
Is staff in agreement with the conditions of approval that were brought up tonight?
I think the suggested language is good language, particularly with recording in the registry. I think that's, that's very important. And then the language for the shared easements for the driveways, I think that will clarify a lot for potential buyers. So I think they're, they're good recommendations as a whole.
Yep, all of these were comments that we directed to, that we directed to the applicants. We didn't write this exact language, but these were all points that we talked about together and, and addressed.
Okay. Any questions?
Is Lot 1 buildable? Because isn't that at a bottom of a hill?
I think it is, yeah. It's, um.
It's what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last.
Buildable, just because I know Davis comes down into Gammage and I'm just trying to picture randomly driving through that neighborhood. And I feel that that section, that parcel, Lot 1, is very sloped.
I, per, we, we added some, um, some contours, two-foot contour infold based on publicly available LiDAR data. And we're not seeing any slopes that are, uh, that exceed what would be allowable for building or cause any issues with construction there. No, I, I don't see any issues with the slope on Lot 1.
Are those two-foot contours shown on the plan?
Two-foot.
Yes, the two-foot contours that are shown on our map.
So there's, there's a total drop of about four feet as you move across that entire.
Yeah, it's.
60-something feet.
It's definitely, it's definitely steep to get up there, but that right there doesn't seem to be.
I'm, I'm looking at the lot right now on Google Maps and it's pretty flat.
I think max slope within the building window there is greater than, or less steep than 10%.
Additional questions?
Yeah, I guess just to, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I interrupted.
Mm-hmm, go for it.
Uh, I, I just did the math. It's 6% grades, so we're, it's good.
And it says to create three residential building lots? What does, is it just going to be single families or is it going to be multi-unions?
So the, the owner has proposed this subdivision for possible future sale of lots or development of them, of his own, but currently there is no proposed development with on these lots.
Can a multifamily go into that area?
Yes, there, there can be on those lots. To some extent. I don't have a calculation to how many units could say fit on Lot 1 right now.
Yeah, I think a lot of it would come down to parking. You need 1 and 1/4 spaces per unit, so you'd quickly back into a limit of how many units. I'm sure you could have two or three. I don't know that you could get much beyond that, one, two, or three.
I apologize. I'm looking at what that lot is in acres. .08 acres under Form Based Code because we don't have a density maximum in T-4.2B. So it defaults to the comp plan as 16 units per acre, so that would be 1.28 units. So you could put a single-family house there. That's it. Additional questions?
I just noticed the time. Do we need to make a motion to extend?
We will need to do that when we conclude this one.
Okay.
We can't take up new business, but we are compelled to finish the business that we've started. So, thank you for asking that question. Seeing no additional questions, thank you very much. Do you have any additional information?
Yes, just, just one as, um, two, as far as the fee in lieu for the open space requirement, obviously we don't have the, the space to dedicate any land. I do ask the board to look at the existing facilities immediately within this neighborhood. Pettingill Park, I believe, is, is, it's slightly over 600 feet, somewhere between there and 1,000 feet away. And it has many facilities within it. So we'd ask the board to, to waive that requirement.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, I'd seek a motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
So moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. So at this time, we would invite the public to come forward. We will utilize the same rules that we used last time. Please begin by stating your name and address and limit your comments to five minutes. Okay. If you just give the stack and then, okay, this will preserve more of your time than, than having to walk around, so.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Kovakovich. I live at 112 Gammage. I'm a direct abuser to this property. I'm here because I believe the further development of our city through transect 4.2B will in time be great for Auburn, but only if the growth it promotes is mindful of the needs of the community at large and our city's capacity to absorb the growth that the zone creates. More important than those though, I think that our city's growth in zones like T-4.2B should be tempered by the checks and balances afforded here in this forum. 4.2B isn't a one-size-fits-all situation. In preparing for tonight, I've gathered some evidence which will show the proposed subdivision at 118 Gammage is an inappropriate application of transect 4.2B. That evidence includes easements of pre-existing infrastructure which complicate the ability to develop the lots created by an approved subdivision, prior knowledge by the developer of existing underground infrastructure which could make one or both new lots of this subdivision unbuildable. And finally, but no less important, due to the surrounding terrain and longstanding issues with stormwater runoff, there is a regular and recurring issue of seasonal flooding in that exact spot where those curb cutouts are despite not being in a flood zone. So I'd like to just go through the exhibits I've provided you as quickly as possible. The first culvert, on page 11 of the proposal put forth by Teradyne and Mr. Violet, there is a mention of an easement found in Book 344, Page 113, that I, Charles Curtis of County of Andrews Cogan and State of Maine, do hereby acknowledge, do hereby grant, release, sell, and convey into said Auburn Water Sewerage District the perpetual right, privilege, and easement to lay, keep, and maintain a sewer pipe on my land at the junction of the westerly line of Gammage Avenue and the southerly line of Davis Avenue in said Auburn, beginning at the southerly end of the stone culvert now laid under Davis and already extended into my land, continuing from said point until the present store building now located on said lot in curving direction to the westerly line of Gammage Avenue at a point about eight feet from said southerly line of Davis Avenue. Culvert 2. The information that in 1924, an easement can be added to information provided by John Blay of Auburn Planning about a second culvert that runs between Mr. Violet's property and my property. I made inquiries about the ability of the lot in 2012 July, during which I was preparing to make an offer to Mr. Violet for .1 acre parcel, which is essentially now Lot 3. This is a response, this is my email to John. Hi, John, thanks for taking time to come out to the house today. Please let me know if anything turns up with respect to stormwater lines along Gammage and the possibility that there is a storm drain or line connecting the culvert coming down the gully that runs behind my house. It looked at the plan arc, this is John Blay's response to me on July 5. I looked at the plan archive. There is a 4x5 stone box culvert that runs down that area. Unfortunately, you cannot build on top of that structure. I pushed back and I said, really? Is there anything we can do? And he said, Matt, it's a major stormwater pipe. Unfortunately, that's, the city has control over the stormwater pipes and will not allow construction over them. Exhibits 4A and B. So as part of this investigation on my part, I was getting from Auburn Water District and planning, you'll see on 4A, there's a green, green line in the documents I provided. If the drawings were accurate or to scale, that would put that culvert that's in that drawing in my basement. That's an old drawing. And so I was consistently told over and over, the drawings aren't accurate. So if you look at the path in the culvert in Exhibit 4B that runs along my property line with Mr. Violet's property line, that's a little more reasonable, but since they don't really know where the culvert is, that line is in question because there is no easement on file. that line is in question because there is no easement on file for that pipe, a four-by-six, uh, what do they call it? Oh, pottery pipe that was put in in 1912. It runs into a hill in my backyard, down my property line, and then disappears, we don't know where to. How am I on time?
I apologize, mister.
I have one last statement, and this is the most important, please, just let me, uh, grant me one minute more.
Uh, un- unfortunately, we, 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 we don't do that, and I, I apologize, I would have to,
Yeah, here.
have to do it for everyone else, but, um.
Hello. Thank you for having me, planning board members, my name is Audrey Murphy. I live at 4 Pine Way Drive, which is just adjacent to his, and it runs behind the lot that we're talking about. I'm going to finish reading Matt's thing here, he says, as you know, we, you, we, you found an easement across 118 Gamage that was granted to the Auburn. Okay, except for from a call, a call with Mike Broadbent, RE, the importance of the easements. All right, great, um, so you know, we, you found an easement across 118 Gamage that was granted to the Auburn Sewer District for a line that used to be combined. The district, since the untangible word, you know, having that line, we separate our sewers from the stormwater systems. Our sewer main is now out on Gamage, but that line is still a valuable storm drainage line and should be recognized by the city, and you know, the district will be more than happy to transfer that easement over to them because that's where it belongs. These lines are, they know, shown on the maps, as you pointed out earlier, not always accurate. And the only way to determine their exact location would be, you know, either to survey them, either through locate, locating equipment or physically locating them by excavating them and marking their location, confirm where they are. That being said, in addition to the lines that go across 118's property, there's a line that goes across your property at 112 Gamage Avenue, and where that sits on the boundary. And there's going to have to be, whether there is an easement for it or not, there needs to be proper access for that. I think you had that, you had said that you never did find an easement for the old stone box, but that is, that's acknowledged, that is true. And I'm going to continue reading yours. Flooding, in my presentation, I have also included that before and at, in his presentations, before and after photos of flood that took place on November 12. The photos were taken by my neighbor Jesse Billetto at 105 Gamage across the street from 118 Gamage. These photos show the flood risk on the properties without any development. Item 6A, photo before, November 10th, 202, or 2022. Yeah, turf removed to complete his gardening project. Item 6B, photos after the rainstorm, November 12th, 2022, flooding because of the fall rainstorm. In closing, I believe strongly that this evidence is convincing enough to show that this parcel deserves further examination before permitting it to move forward. And for that reason, I would sincerely hope and request that planning board rejects this application until sufficient information can be brought forth to show that this parcel will, can support this kind of development. Also, I would like, I didn't make copies, but I would like you were looking at pictures of, uh, this first one I'm handing out, that is that one lot that you were questioning. These are the other ones, it's what the lot looks like now. As you can see, lot one is a very, very small lot, it's going to be .08 acres. They were saying it's similar to the other footages, frontage on Gamage Avenue. The smallest frontage on Gamage Avenue is 50 feet. This is only going to be 42 feet, and by looking at these pictures I'm passing around, you can see that that lot, if you're going to put a house on that lot, you don't have any green space, you're going to have to get rid of all those trees. I don't see how they even feel they could develop them. The gentleman says he doesn't plan on developing, so what he's going to do is kick the can down the road for the people that may buy that lot and find there's going to be problems. So I would say the neighborhood does not need something like this. My husband has lived in this neighborhood for 50 years. And it is a nice, quiet neighborhood, and it does have mainly single-family homes, there are some duplexes such as the one on his property, there are some across the street. But for that size lot, abutting up to Matthew's property, which is what he's determined is unbuildable, and that's teeny-tiny lot that they want to build on, all those trees would have to come down, I don't see how you could protect anything. So I urge you to reconsider this and do not let this become a subdivision in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Hi, my name is Jordi Knorn, um, 119 Gamage Avenue. Um, the biggest issue I see with this property is a privacy issue. Um, as it is now, it's a single home right there, um, but those folks are always hanging out in front of their house. They never have a backyard, um, there's no sunlight in the backyard right now, so in the summer, those folks are always sitting outside, and right now, that's only a single home. Um, I'm very worried that if we add more properties there that look similar, um, that they will be standing, same, uh, just sitting outside in front. Um, just from my porch and from my front window, I can hear conversation all the time in the summer. Dog is always being let out front, never out back. Um, so by adding more homes and that's singer's, uh, little property, um, I'm afraid that the privacy issue will become even more of an issue for 119 Gamage Avenue, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Stephen Beal, and I usually identify as being at 575 Johnson Road, but I also own a single-family residence on Chepley Street, the next street over from Davis. And I grew up in this neighborhood, I watched the structure that's on this property being built when it was constructed a long time ago. In addition to the concerns that these, uh, other folks have expressed about the very, very small lot size even under T42B and as a subdivision, uh, I'm concerned about the, uh, if I understand correctly from Catherine's explanation, the joined driveway access on Davis Avenue. Uh, and, uh, I would question how far from the actual corner that is because there's a stop sign right there at the foot of Davis Avenue. Although this is a 25 mile an hour zone on both Davis and Gamage Avenue, traffic coming down the Gamage Avenue Hill from out the five-way intersection with Park Avenue and Lake Street uh, is, uh, usually averages good deal more than 25 miles an hour. And I'd be very concerned about, uh, a driveway exiting onto Davis, uh, Avenue just before that stop sign. What is that stop sign distance?
So the driveway access is on Gamage Avenue, um, but I can take a look at the distance.
I thought you had indicated that there was one, there was another one on, on Davis originally? But the plan seemed to show Gamage.
Yep, yep, just Gamage, so just the two on Gamage.
Okay.
Yeah, but I can go look too.
Is there any other member of the public that wishes to speak on this topic? Right, seeing none, I'll accept the motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion for staff? I, I guess, my only question is, uh, I will say that, um, and this is not always a popular opinion, I, I'm not sure there's such a thing as a house too small or a lot too small. I grew up in New Auburn in a 890 square foot, three-bedroom house, so, like, something's got to be pretty small for me to think of it as small, too small. Having said that, so lot size is not a concern to me, however, I also own another house in New Auburn that had a really nice, big lot that I couldn't do anything with because there was precisely that city easement underneath my lot going from Broad Street down to Mill Street. I would have loved a garage, I had plenty of room, but I couldn't do on, because you can't build on that, so do we know where that is and does it cut across that? That lot, would, would, so, I, I was having a difficult, they're saying that this cuts across lot number one? Or lot number three?
So I was, I was relying on the, on the professional land surveyor on this plat plan, uh, it didn't, it, it didn't bring anything up. Um, there is, there is a four, four-by-eight box culvert, and certainly we can't put any structures on that. But my assumption was, is that it wasn't located on this lot, it's not showing up in any, any kind of deed research. Um, I would refer to the consultant on that. Um, but certainly if the, if the box culvert was located on that lot, then, you get us, throw it the other way. Yeah, so it's, it's in between this area here. Yeah, let me see.
At this one?
Nope. So, it's in this area right in here that the four-by-eight box culvert is located.
But it may be on that.
What's that?
But it may be on that property.
It, it could be, um, but, you know, without any test pits or anything like that, it's, it's hard to say, but it didn't come up in the deed research, it should, it should come up in the deed research for the land surveyor. And I would, I would, uh, you know, again, defer to the consultant on that to see if there was any kind of findings on there, due diligence on that.
Was there? Were you able to locate the drain?
There, there is an easement referenced in the deed.
So there is an easement referenced in the deed, um, there's no great description of where it is. Uh, we found, found no evidence during our survey of the utility running across the property. We didn't do any borings. From some remapping that we were able to find with City GIS, uh, appeared that that, utility is running just to the, if I could see our map, to the south of our property, I believe.
It, it, it's safe to say no one knows exactly where it is?
Uh, you see that, the, the, the drainage manhole right there. That's where we believe that it's running to. Parallel, parallel to the property line.
And that's based on what again?
Uh, some City GIS. I, I don't have those exhibits for us.
So I, I, I have a question. So is, you didn't pick up the drain manhole in the survey?
We picked it up, we didn't, we didn't do inverts. No.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, if there are no other questions, we need to take action.
I just have one question, sorry. Jo, I think I just want to make sure I'm understanding, did you say that they couldn't build on this lot?
Not on the lot, on the pipe. On the pipe itself.
Oh.
So we need, you would need to know where the pipe is.
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I apologize, we can't, we can't enter back into, um, a debate with public. I, I understand, it's, it's frustrating when we're passionate about something, to have to sit, and I get it.
I got a question, Evan.
Yeah.
Leave it or not. So, uh, we're not actually talking about building plans right now, tonight. We're talking about this lot being made into three. So there's a lot of speculation about what's going to build and what you can build and what you can't. But that's not what we're really focusing on tonight. Just want to ma- make sure that that's, that I'm correct on that.
I agree with you, Darren.
Right, it, it would be inappropriate for us to speculate what could be built. I, I think it would be inappropriate for us to approve a lot that becomes a non-conforming lot. And as long as we're not doing that, then, I mean, if, uh, it's sort of like if an owner chooses to split off a weird lot and now they can't sell it because they did something weird, well.
I was just gonna say, so extrapolating on that, what you're saying is, if you split it, it's not buildable, then it's non-conforming.
Yeah.
Said just a little bit more succinctly, but yeah, right, okay.
Well, that's not what I was saying, I was saying, we, we should not approve, and we, we cannot approve something to be non-conforming, yeah. Okay, so.
So how do we get the answer as to whether or not that's the case?
So the, the city's best available information is this off of our GIS. This is the, um, stormwater infrastructure layer, so Public Works is data. Displayed here, and they think, I guess that lines up pretty well with the consultant's, uh, location of the the manhole, but it looks like it parallels that property line, I wouldn't count on this to be an exact survey location, but we know that it's near that property line, probably on the neighbors.
Yeah, it's been my experience, I think the most I've ever seen it off was about maybe eight feet. So you definitely can't rely on it to lay a fence.
And I, I think, um, Jim Corbin's here as a surveyor, I think they survey located that manhole culvert that's here as,
Correct.
you know, as a reference point.
I concur, Eric's, but what Eric's pulling up right now nearly coincides exactly with exhibit four B we were given by the public of where the line is, it's not, it's not on, uh, the property in question, it is just southwest of it. It's actually on 62. No, not 62, that's the frontage, but it's on the adjoining property.
Uh, I, if I may add, it certainly would be outside of the.
Okay.
Go, I'm sorry.
I guess, please don't enter into, in the same way that we don't really want the public to continue to enter.
Understood.
If you are answering the question about where that is, by all means, if you're going to enter additional information, maybe wait, and if we ask.
Understood.
Okay.
I, I would add that even if the, the, that drainage was on the property, it wouldn't make it completely unbuildable, like they could, they could, the lot is big enough, it could be shrunk down to something like that lot, like lot one's size, and they could still build something on it. So it's, we're not, right now, it wouldn't be approving a non-conforming lot, in my opinion.
Other discussions, questions? If not, I'm going to seek a motion, one way or the other. The last item, there was some long pause in silence, um, the, the, our ordinance is quite clear that if someone puts a proposal forth, and I don't know if this counts for subdivision, I assume it does, and we fail to take action within a certain period of time, it's simply just approved. And I think that we need to not sit here and wait, if someone wants to make a motion for or against, they should do so. Um, but I'm putting a 45-second, second clock on this, and either we're taking action or we're failing to take action because the board has been sort of slow-playing this tonight. So, having said that, does anyone wish to make a motion?
Yes, I'd be happy to make a motion. I make a motion to approve the subdivision of the parcel at 118 Gamage Ave, parcel ID 250-060, to create three residential building lots and waive the fee reference in section 60-1367 Recreation Requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes, 5-2. Item number five has been tabled. Item number six, public hearing. We have passed nine o'clock. In accordance with planning board policies and procedures, we must receive a unanimous vote in order to move forward, uh, with any additional items. As chair, I would ask, because, um, I guess, I don't want to table that public hearing. My preference would be that we conduct item number six, the public hearing on the text amendment, and item eight at the minimum. Ideally include at least item nine as well.
So Evan, from a procedural standpoint, can we cap it? Because I have been here, like, at times till 11:30, and, um, I don't want to have that tonight. So could we say item six, item eight, then you said item nine? To the extent that it does not exceed, what time is it now, almost 10 o'clock, nine, nine-thirty? So 10:15, 10:30, so give an hour?
So 10:30, is that your motion? That you make a motion that we proceed with those items?
I didn't know that I could cap the time. Can I?
Yes, of course.
Okay, I will make a motion that we proceed with item six, item eight, item nine, not to exceed a time limit at 10:30 Eastern Standard.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second, that.
Uh, this is unanimous vote of the board, this is internal business. So this is not just the. I would assume that this is internal policy, so this is not a public hearing. This requires a vote of all members of the board, including the associate members. Yes? Okay, so, all those in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously, we will proceed with items. Six, eight, and nine, up to a time not to exceed ten thirty. Item number six is a public hearing text amendment, public hearing on a text amendment involving definitions and use standards related to. Public safety facilities, detention facilities, correctional facilities, and/or government offices at a site on which. The use does not currently exist, the proposed text amendment includes amendments to chapter sixty, article one, section sixty dash two, definitions in chapter sixty, article four. District regulations, this item is pursuant to chapter sixty, article seventeen, division two amendment to the zoning ordinance or zoning map.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've seen this item in a workshop setting, um, at least two times, I think three times now. Uh, we worked through the, uh, matrix that you saw last month. And we clarified through the discussions here, um, which zones to allow which uses and then. Uh, which uses, um, staff and then the board felt were necessary to define. To, um, then designate which zones they're allowed in and allow them to be considered for. The specific impacts that those particular uses would create. Instead of lumping them all together into, um, government uses or government services. Um, a wide range of uses like this can have very different impacts, and I think that was, uh, recognized and addressed with the, the feedback from the workshop. Uh, we've since drafted definitions for public safety services, uh, correctional institutions. Government services, government offices, municipal or public utility and communication facilities. Municipal uses, um, and detention facility. This came up as a question last night when the council held first reading, why are there some, uh, blank lines? Um, I think that's because people are sitting close to that door and moving, it's just sending off the motion. The blank ones are definitions that were incorporated into one of the other ones, uh, one of the other definitions. So all of those definitions have been created and then we use this matrix to go through the ordinance and designate. Um, which zones particular uses would be allowed. Um, in particular, um, the most limited uses are the, uh, detention facility, correctional institution, or lockup facility. Those are very limited to, uh, T-five-two, uh, where we have an existing facility, the, uh, sheriff's has a facility in T-five-two. In the industrial zone, and then as you move to, um, I guess I'll go through in the order of lesser impact. Um, public safety, uh, services are allowed in the general business, general business two, um, as special exceptions. And then as you move to, uh, municipal or public utilities and communication facilities. Municipal uses, they are permitted rather than special exception, um, as you move into some of the other, other zoning districts. The special exception criteria for most of them, um, based on feedback from the planning board includes. A requirement that the council review a needs and impact assessment, um, that is specific to whatever. Type of use or facility is being proposed, um, we can't necessarily outline every requirement for every type of facility. But it would, it would look at needs and I think the planning board, as was pointed out last night, is already essentially looking at impacts. As we define those, uh, what an impact and needs assessment looks like. I think on the impact side, it's really gonna mirror our ordinance, on the need side, we're gonna have to come up with, um, better guidance on what that looks like. Last night, uh, at first reading, um, the council asked for a guide to what that impact and needs assessment looks like. Um, and for us to tell them at second reading on Friday. When we could have that ready for them, staff's ready to commit to that within sixty days of any eventual adoption. Some counselors and the public pointed out that, um, municipal or public utilities and communication facilities. And, uh, government services, um, both listed, um, municipal or public utilities as a component of those two definitions. But as we place those definitions throughout the ordinance, um, some of them required review by the council and some didn't. Staff is suggesting, um, that a way to clarify that and correct that confusion. Government services was intended to be, um, the, um. More impactful use like structures and buildings, um, larger developments related to. Government services, including, uh, public utilities. And as a way to clarify that, based on the council feedback, the only change that staff is recommending. Um, that the planning board consider recommending back to council. Is that we amend the definition of government services to include at the end, um, where it says public utilities. Be clear that it's public utility structures that exceed a footprint of one thousand square feet. The reason for that is, is it was never intended that a, a new pipe, uh, for water and sewer or a new pump house or something like that, that the. Auburn Water Sewer District is installing would require council approval. And as you look at the, the chapters, um, the districts. You'll see that, um, that government services use often requires council approval, the way that it's drafted as a special exception. The utilities and communication facilities, although it's a special exception in some zones, it does not require council approval as part of that process, so. If we were to modify that definition of government services. So it doesn't trigger a new review until you exceed a thousand square feet of floor area. We are adopting, I would argue, less of a change, um, because we're not triggering the higher level of review. For those utility facilities unless they exceed a thousand square feet, whereas the current draft would require it at square foot one. And, um, it would allow for us to, to have that gradient where smaller utility projects don't require council review, larger ones do. The council also, uh, asked for, uh, I'm saying the council, some counselors, um, not clearly a, a majority. Um, I couldn't tell if it was a majority or a minority based on the, the comments. Uh, mentioned that maybe the council doesn't need to be involved in this type of a review process at all. That's something you can think about as feedback, but it was not more than half the council that made that statement, so staff hasn't recommended any changes. From that, the board had suggested that they preferred council involvement in those decisions related to needs at the last meeting. Um, so we've left it that way and not recommended a change, but just so you're aware. That is something that at least one, I think two counselors mentioned last night. That's all I have, um, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So these, these were left blank, again, right, so we have lockup facility in jail. Are you asking us tonight to give you a recommendation on where we think those?
No, not at all, so, um, I'm asking you to take a look, um, at the, uh, definitions that were included in your packet. And any new definitions, um, are underlined in red text. Um, and those definitions are the same ones that you see in this matrix.
Yep.
That have the X, S, or P next to them. The blank ones are blank because that use, I'll use jail as an example, as one of the lines that are blank. That use was incorporated into one of the other definitions.
Okay.
So it doesn't need its own zone-by-zone designation.
Excellent, um. Next question, municipal uses. Municipal uses, a municipal use means any lawful use of a building or land carried on by the city. Sanitary landfill shall not be deemed a municipal use, so why isn't everything? A municipal use? If that's the definition, the definition is, the definitions here says a municipal use is any lawful use of a building or land carried on by the city. So. The city could say, well, we want to put a detention facility on Park Avenue. But detention facilities aren't allowed, so we're actually gonna review it as a municipal use because it's. Fits the definition of municipal use, why was that definition purposely left so broad as to not exclude the other previously defined terms?
I, I see your point, um, that definition is one that exists and I think that that landfill. Uh, qualification came up when they were amending the ordinance to allow for landfills and people were concerned that it would be more broadly. Looped into municipal use. I definitely see your point, I think if there are. If there's a particular use proposed that falls into, uh, more than one category or there are two standards that apply, we would have to apply the more stringent standard. But I, I get your point, somebody could argue that.
We would have to, right? I guess what I'm saying is, uh, if there's no reason why that wasn't done specifically like that, my preference would be to just be like. A municipal use means any lawful use of a building or of land carried on by the city, not elsewhere defined. In the ordinance, and then it's like, okay, none of those other definitions count as a municipal use, as just a municipal use.
That's a great clarification that I think addresses your concern.
Any other comments? Okay. Is there another questions, uh, questions for staff?
I just looked up what municipal use was and it was definitely a little bit more clear, I'm just saying like Googling it. Was a little bit more clear than this.
Well, I know, but our definition doesn't necessarily match Google, like you should see our definition of farm, you know? So. There is no applicant in this case, um, so I would seek a motion to open it up to public input.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? We're open to public input, um. You, I know that you gentlemen know the rules, so we'll save time by not going through them, uh, but if you have questions, please let me know. Now, does anyone wish to speak on this topic? Alright, seeing none, uh, I would seek a motion to close the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Any discussion? People like it, they don't like it, they want changes?
I actually, I, I'm sorry, I do have one more question. The, that structures that exceed one thousand square feet part, is that included in the suggested motion? Or is that something that we'd have to add to the suggested motion?
Staff, staff is suggesting that that's a way to address the, um, the concern that was pointed out last night. Where there was not an intention to require that level of review for every utility, like pipes and pump stations, but. There was for larger, uh, utility projects, so yeah, if you, um, as the board wanted to include that, staff is recommending that you do. Include that as an amendment, as part of the amended text.
Eric, were there any other changes? Uh, I noticed, uh, there looked like there were some maybe in blue at one point, are those what those changes were, or did I?
Yep, that's the same thing, that's the, that's the definition piece and then the, the other one was just a information sheet.
The red text here is what was, um, drafted prior to last night's council meeting, the blue shows the edits that staff is suggesting could be made to. Achieve that distinction between large and small utility projects.
What page is it, is that in our packet? No, because you just did that today, because they met last night.
Correct, it's not in your packet. Only in the memo that we handed out tonight.
Tonight, okay, just in that memo, okay. Okay. There's no discussion, so I will expect some action, if, if, if no one has anything to discuss. Remember, this is not a motion to approve, this is a motion to forward, um, a recommendation. Uh, I guess, how would you want to say, like, is, is a motion to forward a favorable recommendation to make these changes. Um, to the ordinance or a motion to set, to. Recommend that these changes not be made, essentially those, those are really the, the choices. Remembering that there was discussion about the thousand square foot and. Um, whether we still want council to be involved in a needs assessment and then the possibility of. Codifying municipal uses to be a little more specific and exclude all other defined municipal uses.
Alright, uh, I make a motion to forward a positive recommendation to the city council to adopt the text amendment involving definitions and use standards related to public safety facilities, detention facilities, correctional facilities, and/or government offices. At a site on which the use does not currently exist, the proposed text amendment includes chap, includes amendments to chapter sixty, article one, section sixty dash two. Definitions and chapter sixty, article four restrictions, uh, district regulations pursuant to chapter sixty, article. Seventeen, division two amendment to the zoning ordinance or zoning map. Including the staff's suggestion to include in the government services definition, a one thousand square foot.
Threshold?
Threshold.
Second.
Is there a second, yes, is there a discussion? Uh, I would make a motion to amend, uh, to add, um. To amend, uh, municipal uses, to re-municipal uses means any lawful use of a building or of land carried on by the city. Other, other than a used defined, uh. Other than. Other than a used defined. Other, how would you say that, other, other than. Let me guess, um, I know, I don't remember what I said.
Did staff write it down?
Yeah.
What did I say?
Um, you said not elsewhere defined in the ordinance.
Okay, so municipal uses means any lawful use of building and or land carried on by the city, not defined elsewhere in the ordinance. Sanitary landfill shall not be deemed as a municipal use, so I'm making a motion to amend our recommendation to include that as well, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion on this, on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, the most, main motion has been amended, is there any other discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Yes, opposed? In favor or opposed? In favor, okay, you were.
Just a little late, just a little late.
Johnny come late to that game, I was, I needed some clarification, alright. Uh, item seven was previously tabled to a special meeting on February twenty-eighth at six o'clock, right? I think you had asked that question, yeah, okay. So, uh, we have elections, so. Um, elections of the board, I'm gonna try to remember off the top of my head. I think if more than one person gets nominated, I'll have to pull out the policies and procedures to make sure that we're doing this quite tip-top, I think. More than a person is nominated, we actually do have to do a secret ballot. Um, however, um. We will conduct our elections for officers, we need to elect a chairperson and a vice chair, traditionally. There's no rule on as to which one we elect first, traditionally we've elected a chairperson first. Elections work by, um, nomination process, someone is nominated by another member. If they accept that nomination, they will then become a candidate. There is no rule that says associate members can't serve in these capacities, uh. You just need to be a member of the planning board, so. Having said that, I would open up nominations for chair.
I nominate Stacy.
Stacy, do you accept?
I accept.
Are there any other nominations on the floor for chair? Seeing none, we will vote for chair. All those in favor of electing Stacy to chair as a, of the planning board for the next year? You guys get to vote too, yes. Opposed, abstention? One being Stacy, not voting for herself. At this time, I will call for nominations for vice chair.
Paul.
Paul, you've been nominated for vice chair, do you accept nomination? Does anyone wish to make an additional nomination? Seeing none, we will vote on candidate. All those in favor of electing Paul as vice chair for the next year? Opposed, none being, abstention. Paul not wishing to vote for himself. Excellent. We will now move on to item nine, which is public comment. Would ask that you come forward, state your name, address, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Is there any member of the public who wishes to make a public comment at this time? Seeing none, we will move on. We did not approve miscellaneous. So, we will move straight to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Actually, you've just been elected. I think you do it. You've been elected. Okay, I will act in this case, right? Okay, motion to adjourn? Motion, I believe I heard a motion?
Yeah, motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.